Good evening, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Thank you and welcome to everybody. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, we'll start with Member Ashby. Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenier, Gara, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
A quorum is present. Disclaimer, please.
Yes, this meeting is broadcast live this evening. There's a replay on Saturday on Metro Cable, Channel 14, at 7:00 PM. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. Speaker's lips are located in the back of the room on the ledge. If you want to speak, please complete one and turn it into the assistant clerk at the front. We also have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices should you need them. In addition, I would like to encourage anyone who is interested in communicating on any agenda items with their elected officials to use our e-comment system, which is on our Granicus page and part of the Agenda packet. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would like to invite Ms. Vee and the students, excuse me, and the staff of the George Sim Community Center, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I had the privilege of working with Ms. Vee 20-plus years ago at the George Sim Center, and so glad and appreciative of all your dedicated service to our city and all the great team out in Councilmember Guerra's district. So, please come forward. You can come right on up to the podium so you can be on TV. There you go. Welcome. Why don't you introduce yourselves? Who are you all? Please.
I'm McKenzie Jackson.
I'm Deja De Gil.
Please.
I'm Beverly Gil.
I'm Reginald Wilson.
I'm Storm Delarosa, Program Leader at George Sim.
At George Sim. Wow. What a great history. Please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you again for leading us. Appreciate it. That is great. Members of the public, we have three main items tonight on our agenda. We have a rezone project application out in the Elmhurst neighborhood. We have a proposal to expend some one-time money for youth programs and internships. And then we have a workshop, a substantive workshop, on the issue of homelessness. And so let us begin with the first item.
I think we need to continue, Item Two, correct?
We do need to continue, Item Two. Thank you.
I'll move that we continue it to March 7th.
Moved in second.
March 7th, for clarification.
March 7th. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Item Two, dealing with marijuana regulation, is continued until March 7th. So now let us begin with Items One and Two, the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Yes. This public hearing is a 2131 51st Street rezone project, and I believe the presenter for this is Garrett Norman, is that correct? Garrett Norman.
Mr. Norman, present. And then I want to talk about how the public testimony ought to proceed here. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the Sacramento City Council. My name is Garrett Norman, and I am an Assistant Planner in the Community Development Department, who is a project planner for the 51st Street rezone project, file number P-16037. The project is located at 2131 51st Street, which is on the northeast corner of 51st Street and V Street in the Elmhurst neighborhood. The subject site measures approximately 0.08 acres and has an existing 1,503-square-foot structure with a 414-square-foot detached garage. The project is Zoned R1, or the Single Unit Dwelling Zone. The applicant is proposing to operate a 733-square-foot office. The remaining 770 square feet of the building would be utilized as a one-bedroom residential unit. An office use is not permitted within the R1 zone. As a result, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property. The Planning and Design Commission passed a recommendation to the City Council to rezone the property to limited commercial, or the C1, with no conditions. The limited commercial zone allows for development of small commercial uses, including retail, commercial services, and office. The motion passed by a 7-to-5 vote. Staff has continued to receive many comments from the neighborhood expressing concerns related to traffic, parking, and the permanent effects of rezoning from residential to limited commercial. The proposed use will not generate an impact to traffic. The city's Public Works Department evaluated the potential impact of an office use and found the adjacent roadway's capacity can accommodate the increase in traffic. There is an existing residential parking program in place on the adjacent streets that limits non-residences to time restrictions or prohibits them from parking on certain streets. Staff's observations found this parking program is effective, and the proposed office will not create an impact to the on-street parking system. Because the limited commercial, or C1, zone allows several commercial uses such as retail stores, staff has created an alternative ordinance to help address concerns of the neighbors. This alternative ordinance is for the residential office, or RO, zone. This zoning district only allows for residential and office uses by right. Staff has placed additional conditions onto the ordinance to further restrict the property, such as limiting any office use to 733 square feet, and no medical offices or clinics shall be allowed. Staff believes this ordinance and its conditions restrict future uses of the site to a small neighborhood serving office use in the northern portion of the building and the single-family residents in the southern portion. Staff finds these conditions ensure that any future office use would be compatible and consistent with the character of the existing neighborhood. The applicant is acceptable to the RO ordinance and its conditions. These issues are discussed in more depth within the staff report. Staff reviewed the requested proposal and finds that it meets the goals of the general plan related to promoting neighborhoods that contain a mix of compatible land uses, such as small neighborhood uses that are within a walkable neighborhood. Staff recommends the City Council adopt the alternative ordinance to rezone the property to the residential office zone. This concludes my presentation. Now I'd like to turn it over to the applicant, Mr. Jeffrey Stoll, from Silva Stoll Architects.
Welcome, sir. How long is your presentation?
Five minutes.
Very good. Four and a half.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. Thank you for having us here this evening to present our proposal. I'd like to thank Garrett and staff for getting us to this point, and the councilmembers who took time out to talk to us applicants. With special recognition to Councilwoman Guerra for trying to get us to an amicable resolution, which I thought we had with the RO zone, which essentially is a downgrade, if you will, from what was originally requested, desired by my client, as a C1 zone. I'm going to go ahead and skip any discussion about exactly where the property is located, assuming that you're all very familiar with it. I'd like to just talk about it from the standpoint of the existing structure, just so that everybody's clear on how it was originally constructed and what it was originally in terms of use. Let's see, can I point here? Yes. So, there, I think, has been a bit of a misunderstanding from some being that this is currently zoned residential, to where people have thought that the entire structure has been used as a dwelling, and that is inaccurate. What I'd like to do is just explain that originally, this structure was built to where this here is the dwelling unit. And this half of the structure here you see that's in blue, this is actually a space that was created as a market, from what I understand, a small neighborhood market. And so, you know, to give you a better view of what this looks like, let me just give you a little enlarged view here. So here is, here is the portion of the structure that really is subject to our proposal. This is a storefront that was the market originally. I'd like to just quickly mention that my client has recently improved the dwelling unit that still exists where this gray poche is. This is a one-bedroom dwelling that he went through and remodeled the bathroom and the kitchen, and so he's made an investment there, and I just want to make it clear, this is not like, this is some developer looking to, you know, redevelop this site. This is a dwelling unit, and his intention is to leave that as a dwelling unit. The subject space, half of the structure, is really what we're talking about, and, again, was used as a market originally, and then, in recent times, has been used as, it was a home, operated under a home occupancy permit, I believe, Garrett? And it was some sort of a seamstress operation, I believe. And, again, you know, there's the storefront, and just to give you an idea of the space we're talking about, it's a small space. It's the interior space. The interior space is a slab-on-grade where the dwelling unit is a raised foundation. I'd like to just point out the difference here in the entrance. There's the entrance to the dwelling unit. So you can see the difference clearly, is this is a storefront, and when there has been talk about how, you know, this should continue to be a dwelling, again, this was not a dwelling. If, if the, if you can see, if this is not, if this proposed zoning is not acceptable to all of you, my client will not only have to go through a proposal to remodel the storefront, which is a historical structure now, to remodel it to where it would be converted to a dwelling use, but the foundation of this, because it's at sidewalk level, it was used as a market, it would have to be, we would probably propose a raised foundation, and it would, it would take on a different nature. So, I think most importantly, I just wanted to make the point that this, this half of the structure has not been used as a dwelling. And his proposal, my client, to use this as a professional office, again, this is not a large space. It's, the interior square footage is 684 square feet. It, I think, if anything in this neighborhood, the location of this is very appropriate from a, from a city and regional planning perspective. I know there are people that don't want anything but residential in the neighborhood, but right across the street is the market. This is, you know, it's at a node, it's on a fairly high-traveled street, but yet, my client's business, as much as some think that it's going to increase traffic, the very nature of his business.
Let's wrap it up here, okay? And then we'll have a, we'll hear from people in favor and opposed, then we'll have a conversation. We can bring you back for more questions, okay?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So, we have a number of people signed up, and the way I'd like to do this, and trying to be reasonable here, we have a lot of business on the agenda tonight, and this is important. I'd like to allocate 20 minutes apiece, 20 minutes of support and 20 minutes of opposition, and then bring it back to the City Council for a discussion and a decision. All right? So, I know that there are more people signed up in opposition, so, you know, you can arrange your time, or come on up and say me too. The signs are very, very bright and colorful, by the way. So your presence is definitely noted, but we're going to limit it to 20 minutes apiece, okay? Let's start with the proponents. Do we have those divided by proponents and opposites? Those in favor, 20 minutes. Two minutes, no more than two minutes per person, but we're going to keep it to 20 minutes, okay?
So the timer starts at 15, so I can do 15 and add to it as you go, or however you want to do that?
That's fine. That's fine.
All right, I will figure it out.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll call three at a time, which is our normal practice. We'll start with Mary Wirling, and then Megan, it looks like Matheny, and then Kenny Freeman, or Carrie Freeman. Mary?
Why don't we, why don't you call six, if you would, please?
Six, okay. Andy Nichols, then, after that one, Stephen Pagano, and Gabe Turney.
Okay.
Hi, Cindy, uh, Mary.
You are?
Mary Wirling. I didn't realize I was going to be number one, so you're catching me off-guard here. If everyone takes a look at that photo, you see the vehicle right there, and then it is cut off, but my dwelling is actually immediately to the left of that photo. I reside on 2101 51st Street. That is a, it's a converted duplex. I live on the corner, but in terms of seeing how this renovation has happened from start to finish, it has been something I've been hearing about from my windows for quite some time now. Originally, I'll be honest, I was opposed to it, but after any, after seeing the hard work that Councilman Guerra and the owner of the property have done to accommodate our, the neighborhood's needs, from rezoning, from the original rezoning request to the current office dwelling, I would like to advocate the City Council to vote in favor of this. My concern, I've lived in Elmhurst now for three years, and I consider myself a very lucky resident of it, but my, I would be sad to see that our neighborhood is not open to opportunities for change and being welcoming.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Did a good job being first. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Council members, Elmhurst community, and the City of Sacramento. Please allow me to introduce myself as Megan Matheny, a recent transplant back to Sacramento and a current Elmhurst resident. I stand here in absolute solidarity with the application to use 2131 51st Street as a residential office. I was born and raised in East Sacramento. I attended East Sacramento schools and have chosen to return to East Sacramento as an adult. I have seen many changes in this micro-community and the city at large over the past 30-plus years. We are living in a world of change, and it's the right time for Elmhurst to embrace this moment in the evolution of our community. In my research efforts, which include data, neighborhood history, and an extended dialogue with Mr. Casno, I believe Mr. Casno should be allowed to have his neighborhood-scale business within the community he serves. This strictly 733-square-foot location has been used as a commercial space, as previously mentioned. Having his real estate office within our neighborhood would add great value. We would have an extra set of eyes to the neighborhood during the day while most of us work. It adds diversity to our neighborhood, and there is considerably greater curb appeal since his ownership. Furthermore, I have spoken at length with Mr. Casno, and I have toured his building that he proposes to make his office. I believe through dialogue and through my own findings that Mr. Casno only wishes to add value to the neighborhood. The neighborhood which he raises his family, the neighborhood which he supports via multiple charitable endeavors, and the neighborhood which he will probably end his days in. Sacramento is amidst a renaissance, and I believe we are a community, we, as a community, excuse me, ought to embrace the growth and trajectory our city is currently navigating. We are a city that welcomes diversity, offers inclusion, and looks towards the future. I optimistically align Elmhurst with these ideals. The future's now, and I believe that Mr. Casno will honor these ideals as he opens his doors as a real estate office within Elmhurst. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Hi there, I'm Carrie Freeman. I've lived in Elmhurst for 29 years and was on the, one of the founding board members back in 1990 and remained so for 12 years in various capacities. Thank you for letting me speak. Briefly, I've been in favor of this from day one with one concern, and that was what, what could the future use be if and when Mr. Casno sold the property, if it was in a C1 zoning? So that concern has been addressed appropriately. I am completely satisfied and thrilled with the change in the zoning to the residential office category. This accommodates the uniqueness of this space at this intersection, in this neighborhood at this time in Sacramento, and addresses my concerns for future uses. This change is a perfect solution for a win-win outcome. That, so basically, thank you to Councilmember Guerra, really appreciate it, and all the staff and those that have participated with these efforts, and I hope after the vote, thank you, we can all, we can all offer Mr. Casno a very warm welcome to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Andy Nichols. I'm an Elmhurst resident. Actually, before I begin speaking, I did want to acknowledge the no-to-rezone effort. I'm actually impressed with the coalition they've put together, the signage, their message, the effort to try and voice their concerns, and greatly appreciate that. As an Elmhurst resident, I certainly could see myself standing with them. On this particular issue, however, I, I am in disagreement with them. I do believe it is important to recognize this is not a corporation or even a company. This is an individual, Mr. Casno, who has continually reinvested in the community, whether it's with ESAC Little League, ESAC Youth Soccer Club, River Park Baseball, David Lubin School and their garden tour, the Sacred Heart School Holiday Home Tour, Sutter Lawn Swim and Tennis Club, or even Pops in a Park, which is a huge hit and an important investment made by this city and its residents. Mr. Casno has contributed to all of those. In fact, in the last one, you could frequently see him on a Saturday night handing out Otter Pops at the booth that he has rented at those events. I believe Mr. Casno will continue to make an investment. His business is real estate. His business is improving the neighborhood, and he continues to show that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. By the way, for people standing, there are seats up in front. You're welcome to come sit down. Plenty of seats to fill in. You're all welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and the council. I'm going to be very short. I am an Elmhurst resident. I raised my children in that community, and like Andy said, I'm also sensitive to what's going on in that community. It's very important to me. My children play on the streets. It's residential. I get it. But I have personally been able to walk through that property, and I see what's occurring there. You know, you might think that a big box was coming in, you know, Home Depot, et cetera. What I'm seeing there is improvement to property, a very small-scale project. Mr. Casno is a good friend of mine. I know him very well, and I know that he is literally concerned about maintaining the integrity of that block in that community. And so, with that being said, I just think that this is a relatively minor issue that's part of a bigger issue, but I would say that, given the minor amount of change and the improvements that Mr. Casno has done there, and his integrity as a person, as a member of our community, that I think that I am in favor, and any resident of Elmhurst should be.
Thank you very much for testifying. Let's call the next few peoples, please, so that we can...
Following Gabe will be Steve Maviglio, Alicia Kerr, Alan LaFosso, and the last speaker, for those in favor, Jennifer Fearing.
Jennifer Fearing. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I am a 15-year resident of Elmhurst, and simply, I am absolutely in favor of this. So, that's it. Thank you.
Please, please give this man a medal. Thank you. Next, Alan?
Maviglio.
Steve next, or Alan? Go ahead, Steve. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg.
Nice to see you, Steve.
I am a 16-year resident of Elmhurst, and what my neighbors and I love about our neighborhood is that we're able to walk, to get a great sandwich, to go to a hospital, to get a Frappuccino. Elmhurst has had a long history of mixed use, and it still does, and to pretend it's not existing is just wrong. You know, to me, this is nothing but the worst case of NIMBYism I've seen in a long time in this city. We are a mixed-use neighborhood. This is the kind of thing that makes a neighborhood great, and I appreciate the work of councilmember of our district trying to come up with a compromise, and I urge you to go along with what staff recommends. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you. Jennifer, welcome.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jennifer Fearing. I have lived near the corner of 51st and T since April of 2009. Mr. Casno was the seller's agent when I bought my house on T Street, and he was, in fact, the buyer's agent when I sold my house near McKinley a few years before that. As an aside, I never went to his office during any of those experiences, but, and I haven't talked to him in years, but I know that he cares about our neighborhood, and I know that his business cares about our property values. I think he would make a fabulous neighbor. I appreciate the work that staff and our councilmember Guerra have done to come up with an option that addresses the concerns that some of our neighbors have expressed. And I just want to say that we were frankly ambivalent to the commercial use option. We like mixed use. We support info. We think we should put our money where our mouth is when we talk about those kinds of values. But we're here tonight, we're motivated to come, because we actively support the residential office zoning option, and we encourage you to approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to City Hall. Alan?
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, councilmembers. I'm not a resident of Elmhurst, but I have lots of friends there, and I heard this matter as a member of the Planning and Design Commission back in November, and I'm a member of the minority who are looking for the kind of compromise this provided, and we couldn't quite get there, but a lot of good sifting happens between the commission and the council. The neighbors have done a great job explaining why it's a good compromise, and I wanted to voice support for it, and I won't belabor it further. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Hi.
Hi, good evening. Hello, Mayor Steinberg. Thank you, Councilwoman Guerra. I'm a 17-year resident of Elmhurst, and I support this endeavor because I think it is great quality improvement to our neighborhood. I'm also a citizen and a voter, so I absolutely appreciate a good grassroots effort, and I think the work that has gone into this compromise is outstanding, and it's actually what we look for in any of the parts and pieces of our government. People working together to try to reach a compromise that maybe doesn't make everybody happy, but is beneficial to the community. And I think that we've struck gold here, and I'd like to see Mr. Casno move his office into our neighborhood, and I just really love the color. It looks great. What an, I mean, right there, right off the bat, we have an improvement, and it's what our neighborhood needs. Thank you all.
Very well said. Thank you so much. So that is the testimony and support. Again, I'm going to give, well, more than equal time, because they only took 12 minutes of their 20, but we'll give a full 20 minutes to the opposition here. And again, we welcome you, appreciate the fact you've come and organized, and let's hear your opposition here. But again, if we're going to get to 20 minutes, if we don't hit everybody, we're going to ask for a show of hands after that. So go ahead.
Okay, so we'll call six at a time, so that we can line up. We'll start with Francesco Retano, Sandra Sylvester, Rick Henry, Jeannie Smalley, Joshua Frost, and Brenda, it looks like Rep.
I guess I get to be number one.
Yes, you do.
I'm Francesco Retano. My husband and I have lived in Elmhurst at 54th and V for over 28 years. We're homeowners there. We oppose a rezone of the property at V and 51st Street. I understand from historical research done by Garrett Norman, thank you, that it was zoned residential since 1956. It was a market in the 40s, and I believe it's been a home occupation a few times, but I've known people that have lived there and just used it as an art studio, too, that space. But I want to say I'm not opposed to Mr. Casno's real estate office. What I'm opposed to is rezoning. And I don't need to talk a lot about C1 because we've gone over it. That was my big fear. I mean, it allowed uses by right that run with the land, and so it didn't matter that if it was innocuous real estate office, it could have been turned by a lessy or a second owner into all sorts of things, as Garrett Norman mentioned, including restaurants, fitness studios. I mean, there's a whole list, and that would be by right. So you would have no review, the Planning Commission would have no review, and we, as neighbors, had no review.
But that's not what was before us.
And that's off the table, I hope.
Right.
So, because that would be a Trojan horse in our neighborhood. You'd just be sticking that in there with an innocuous real estate office, and who would know what would happen?
But what's wrong with the residential office?
I'll tell you what's wrong with it. What's wrong with it is, we have UC. I've seen it swallow up things over the years. I mean, they moved a road, they moved out two, two blocks of residential housing, bought them all out. It's gone. I think that's where Shriners is now. Just more and more businesses have come there, and since, Elmhurst really isn't mixed use, anything like the market's even grandfathered in. use, anything like the markets even grandfathered in. So what you've got is you've got residential, one residential, commercial corridor on the west end is Stockton, and then we can walk to all sorts of businesses on Folsom Boulevard and Broadway, which I do all the time. And the thing is, I'm concerned that even the conversion to the office due to the proximity of the UC Medical Center, it's been in a continuous state of development and expansion. And, but one of the things they've done in that development is that...
Ask you to wrap up, if you can, so...
They brought in the medical school and the nursing school, and they need housing. But I do want to thank Councilmember Guerra and Garrett Norman and the planning staff for working on this. They've been great.
Hey. That's, that's good praise from somebody who opposes the compromise, so thank you. Very good. It's important. Thank you.
Government is good government.
Thank you.
Mayor Steinberg and City Councilmembers, my name is Sandra Sylvester. I'm a retired psychologist, and now I play the violin as a chamber musician, and I volunteer with people with MS. I've lived in Elmhurst for 20 years. In early January, I learned about the proposal to rezone in Elmhurst from a neighbor who was going door-to-door with a petition. I was already interested in the uniqueness of our neighborhood because our garden was part of the historic preservation Sacramento Home Tour in September, and I walked the neighborhood and went to meetings and met more neighbors. So I began reading about zoning and went to a meeting a few nights later to learn more about what was happening in Elmhurst. One thing led to another, and I offered to contact the neighbors that I knew personally and tell them about the rezoning. Most of them did not know about the rezoning, but when they learned about it, they wanted to sign the petition opposing the rezone and have signs in their yard which would call attention to this. There are so many things in our lives that we cannot impact. This is one area, our personal homes in our neighborhood, that we can impact, and if we do not take a stand, then who will? Over 520 of our neighbors have signed to oppose this rezone. I ask you to deny this proposal for rezone, not only for us, but looking ahead seven generations into the future, to preserve Elmhurst as a residential neighborhood for them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming to testify. We appreciate it. Next.
Hi, Mayor Steinberg and council. My name is Rick Henry. I'm a 23-year resident of Elmhurst and a lifetime Sacramentoan, and I am opposed to this rezone, not Mr. Casno's office as a real estate office, but as RO, it could open up a can of worms and allow other developments to come in next to other people, and I don't think that's appropriate. There's plenty of vacant office space on Folsom Boulevard and Stockton Boulevard, and I know a number of our neighbors are not opposed to the new proposed development, mixed-use residential office development at T and Stockton. So it's not like we're nimby's. We don't want in our backyard. We're accepting in the appropriate areas. While Sacramento has lots of commercial and office vacancies, it needs housing. It does not make sense to rezon housing that is already located near employment, public transportation, and shopping like Elmhurst. We have invested in our homes and live in Elmhurst. Those of us who have been here for many years, and those of us just moved here, have done so because we want a quiet, cohesive neighborhood. This is a reasonable expectation and should be supported by the Planning Department and you, the City Council. Again, we urge you to support preserving housing and to support a cohesive neighborhood and honor the request of over 520 Elmhurst neighbors by voting against this proposed zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Councilmembers. Thank you for hearing both sides of this discussion. I'll be brief. My name's Joshua Frost. We bought our house in Elmhurst 15 years ago. Like many people, we love the neighborhood because it's safe to walk there. We know many of our neighbors. As we've heard this evening, last time this property was commercial was the 1940s, during which time my house was actually a victory garden. So that was quite a while ago, I think. I am less opposed to this, having heard more about the compromise that's been developed, and I appreciate the work that's gone into that. And I would even go so far as to suggest that perhaps if more of us understood more about the permanent nature of that compromise, we would be less concerned that the next owners of this property would build it into something that would change the very character of the neighborhood. So I think it's the longer term that many of us are worried about, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much for coming to testify. Next, and let's call the next few people, please.
Okay, so the next ones after, you must be Jeannie?
Yes.
So the next ones after will be Brenda Rep, Sarah Rainier, I believe it is, Stefani Robinson, Patricia Doherty, and then Joan Bach.
Please.
Thank you for the opportunity. I've been an Elmhurst resident for nearly 20 years. I live at the corner of 57th and V Street, just shortly up from the property in question. I live just down the street from Broadway, which has multiple businesses and offices. I live close enough to walk to Light Rail, and I can walk over to Smud, which is another big business. We go to numerous stores and businesses on Folsom Boulevard, and we can go over to 65th Street. There's walking areas to get over there. We both go to UC Davis Med Center, and we walk down to Stockton and Starbucks to the complex coming in on T and Stockton. The issue is that Elmhurst is surrounded by businesses, but what we're doing with this rezone is we're putting property, we're rezoning the property that's at the heart of Elmhurst, right in the middle of Elmhurst. And I don't see that this is going to be a benefit. I'm not trying to keep progress and positive changes out of Elmhurst, but I don't see what, what positive benefits this brings into our community. I see this benefiting one realtor and what hit, what is happening at his property, and it will bring more traffic into the property because there are people coming into that site every day and leaving that site, as well as having meetings once a month or so, he said, at our little hearing that we had.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. You just don't think it adds, you don't think it adds anything? Okay. Thank you very much for testifying. Next.
Hi, my name's Brenda Ray. I've lived in that neighborhood for 47 years. I grew up there. I've lived there this whole time. The mom-and-pop store on that corner right there is essential to the neighborhood. It's the best thing ever when, because it benefits our neighborhood. Planning Commission brought up traffic and parking. I'm sorry to say, the store has just a couple 30-minute parking spots. Then we have the AT&amp;T box right there, which is, there always seemed to be an AT&amp;T truck along that side, if not two. So there really isn't any parking there anyways. Now you're going to deplete from the store because there isn't going to be any parking for them, and I just don't think it's beneficial for our neighborhood at all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. Sarah Coleman. Wanted to speak briefly about the fact that my husband and I, his, Justin Rainier, he will not speak given limits of time, purchased a home in this neighborhood for the reason that it is entirely residential, that they, any kind of commercial activity is on the outskirts of the neighborhood, Broadway, Folsom, Stockton, that it is a walking-distance neighborhood, and that there is minimal traffic for our son and now our next child coming very soon. And we really want to emphasize, and also on behalf of all the other younger parents who live in the neighborhood, who couldn't be here tonight because they didn't have childcare, that we all support the desire to keep this neighborhood residential. The home office, the commercial, the residential office does not solve the problem of the fact that, that it will bring more traffic to the neighborhood, and it does not address the long-term impacts of slowly making this area more commercial, which we don't support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Patricia Doherty. I've lived in Elmhurst for the last 15 years. I know all my surrounding neighbors, in fact, two of them since the day they were born. We share dinners, we share tools, we share bounty from our garden, and we have an annual block party every year in the summer. This is the kind of neighborhood we are and the kind of neighborhood I am. So I want to speak a little bit briefly to the process. As you know, it takes a lot of time to notify a neighborhood about proposed changes. You know that probably better than anybody. So it takes time, patience, multiple methods of communication, and I, for reasons that are not, that I can't detail or be debating here tonight, it was not until late November that many Elmhurst residents were alerted to the fact that this, this proposed rezoning. And that was because a sign was posted in front of the, outside of the property. And I'm a little disturbed to hear continually this, this property or what's being proposed as more as a use permit. A use permit would be just fine. We have no problem with a, with a residential business. It is the rezoning, as you've already heard. So, and I do think that is because what is important and what takes time is to get the community input, and that just didn't really happen until actually the wheels were turning on this rezoning. And I would say that if it weren't for the community input that you've had, you wouldn't even come up with a compromise, which I still find not, not appropriate. You do have, now that you have heard from neighbors, you do have the opportunity to respond accordingly, representing the overwhelming sentiment of Elmhurst to be not spot rezoned, and to protect the residential char, the character of it. I think whatever happens tonight, what needs to happen is a deeper conversation with planning, between our community and planning. We, we, the vast majority do not have the same understanding that our neighborhood should be mixed use, and so that, that conversation should be happening, and so I would recommend that.
You're asking, no matter what happens tonight, you want to make sure that there's further conversation about...
Absolutely. I don't want to have to be here again, and I don't think you want to see me here again, where I'm trying to protect the housing stock of my neighborhood.
We'd like to see you here every Tuesday night, actually. All right, there. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Robinson. I'm also a resident of the Elmhurst neighborhood, where I live with Jackson, my eight-year-old, and my youngest son, Maxwell.
Welcome, young man.
Say thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
We are opposed to not only the rezone to RO because it sets a future precedent for other issues, for other sites to be rezoned, which is not a good fit for our neighborhood. I understand that, as a whole, the state is trying to move more towards mixed-use neighborhoods to reduce VMTs. However, we are already an extremely walkable and likable neighborhood. Several of my neighbors walk to work, walk to school, walk to social activities. So we don't need this being pushed on us to help us meet that parameter because we already are on a daily basis. That is a dangerous corner as it stands, so for the Planning Department to say that they did a traffic study and that traffic won't be impacted, I don't, I don't know if they just chose to come in the middle of the day when no one's around. If you come at traffic time, that's a very dangerous intersection. My sons and I have almost been hit on more than one occasion. In speaking with my neighbors about this issue, I spoke with a neighbor that had to jump out of the way of a vehicle and fell and broke her shoulder at this same corner. So it's a terrible place for that location. It doesn't serve our community in any meaningful way. I don't see how it will reduce VMTs because Mr. Casno will be commuting there, his employees will be commuting there, the people that come to his office will be commuting there. So VMTs will not be reduced.
You made, you made the point strongly.
I don't see how that meaning, is a meaningful service for our community, whereas if it remained residential, that is meaningful, meaningful for our community. Additionally, I wanted to...
Young man, anything else? You want to add? I'm sorry, time, your time is up. I'm sorry. We, two minutes apiece, and so we can get through the testimony.
Okay, just one more point, and then if you wanted to say something briefly, if that's okay. I, I do think it's great that Mr. Casno has helped out the ESAC Little League and the ESAC Soccer and the ESAC Sutter Lawn Club and all of those other things, but those are in East Sacramento. He doesn't live in Elmhurst. So I don't see that as a valid argument. He's not contributing to the Elmhurst community. He doesn't live in the Elmhurst community, and he has no plan to move to the Elmhurst community. And more than 520 of my neighbors and I are opposed to this.
Got it. Thank you. Young man, you want to say something?
And I want to keep going to a jeans store and not get run over.
Put it in perspective. Safe, safety first. Thank you so much, young man, for coming tonight.
Hello. My name is Joan Bach. I am a, I will be a 33-year resident in June. I live on 48th Street, which is a through street to the Med Center. You know, the, they were talking about Mr. Casno, how he's improved the property. Well, that's wonderful, but that was a chance he took. And just because those things have been done doesn't mean that what he wants to do is good for our neighborhood. We were waiting for other people to come, and we were right on 51st Street, just north of V. At 10 minutes to 5, there were two UPS trucks. We had cars come through there. You cannot have more than one vehicle pass. You can't step out off the sidewalk without taking your life in your hands. We don't need, we have had, been affected so much by the, by the Med Center and, you know, all those things in that neighborhood that I've seen, and Light Rail and the whole works. You know, one more thing, just because you can doesn't mean you should.
Thank you very much. That is, that is the 20 minutes now.
Two more minutes, because I had to do it.
We do have two more minutes, so let's take a couple more.
Okay, so Mary Ann Higgins, Dorothy McGee, and then maybe Maggie Coulter.
Maggie, please. Maggie, please. Please let Maggie go.
All right.
Maggie really needs to go.
Go ahead, Maggie.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. So, from my perspective, as a 30-plus-year resident of Elmhurst, and also as a former land use planner and an affordable housing advocate, I have a few things to say. First of all, this thing has been presented to you as though it is a use permit. It is not a use permit. If that is rezoned, the neighborhood has no control over the next office that comes in there. There are office uses that are very intensive, dispatch offices, construction offices. There's two, two big garages there that an office could store equipment in. So Mr., what Mr. Casno proposes is all well and good. That's not what the neighborhood is concerned about. He's not held to that. He could lease that property out, he can sell it, and it can be something else. And as far as the restriction to the rest of the property being residential, it's, there are other uses allowed in the RO. Yes, somebody would have to have a permit for those, but they could apply to have those uses in the rest of that building. So I think we need to be clear about this. This is precedent-setting, and the reason that we know it's precedent-setting is that the Planning Department has gone back, what, 60 years, to when this was a store, residence in a store, and said, "There's a precedent right there." Well, before that, there was agriculture. I don't know if they're talking about bringing the cows back, but this has been a residential property, and, and people in the neighborhood can testify to that for over 40 or 50 years. So to go back and say, "Once upon a time, this was a store," again, that's precedent-setting, and we are concerned that this property gets rezoned, then the next one comes in and wants to be rezoned, and, okay, well, you've already got this here and this here, and then pretty soon, we've got a commercial or office strip running up 51st or down V Street. The last point I want to make is Sacramento is in a housing crisis, and I know I don't need to tell you that. So to even lose one unit of housing in an area which is next to a large-scale employer, UC Davis, where people can walk to work, it's got walkable shopping and walkable to Light Rail, to lose one housing unit is not acceptable. Our neighborhood, we want to keep it residential. Over 520 people, I think we actually should get more than 20 minutes because we are clearly the majority voice in the neighborhood. Again, I ask you to think about the future here, save the housing, please don't set a precedent in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We'll take one more, we'll take one more witness.
Good evening. Mary Ann Higgins, 4824 U Street. What they said, and simply that Sacramento, not just Elmhurst, needs more residential zoning. It's in conformance with the land use plan for that area, so we ask you to please vote against any change to even residential office. Keep it R1 in perpetuity. That's what we'd like.
Thank you very much. So I know that there are other people who came in opposition. Those who were opposed but didn't have the opportunity to speak, could you please stand up if you're able, so that we can reflect your... up if you're able so that we can reflect your, there are more folks here? Raise your, raise your hand or, okay. So you know you're, you're counted and we, we've taken in the, uh, the testimony that some 500-plus neighbors signed, uh, the petition against the rezon. So thank you very, very much for coming. We appreciate it. I'm going to turn it now to the council and to the sixth district council member, Council Member Guetta.
Thank you very much, Mayor Steinberg. First, uh, one quick, uh, more of a clarification, uh, because I think there was a, a mention brought about what could the other use of an RO, uh, space be used. Antonio, could you please describe, based on the, the, what we've put here, restrictions on what could be used for commercial purposes, what the residential part of the building could be used for?
So the way the, the alternative ordinance is worded, it allows the 733 square feet of office, uh, that would be an allowed by right use. Uh, we don't condition, um, that use except for it can't be medical office use. Other uses, the real estate office, uh, something like a tax preparer's office, um, would be allowed. Uh, the rest of that property, which is another approximately 750 square feet, um, would be uses that would be allowed by the RO zone by right, which the only other by right use other than office is residential. So if that office were to go away, you could do another, you could rehab that into another unit to be a duplex, or it could be one larger residential. There's nothing in the RO zone that prevents it from being wholly residential use.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Well, first, uh, first of all, I want to, uh, I think a lot of the comments that was said about the organizing and the ability for our community to be engaged on an issue, one that should be applauded. And, uh, uh, on a, on another note, I think it, we're in a time, I think in our country where we need to be more active, uh, we need to be more vocal and engage with our government and not be passive citizens. And I, I think that if there's anything that I appreciate about, uh, our country is that we have that ability to engage our elected officials, uh, in a very meaningful way. So, uh, one, I do want to say that, uh, I think coming to a good solution or coming to an outcome or making any decision does require us the extra hard work to sit down with all of our constituents, both supporting, against, and sometimes ambivalent of, of a project. Because, uh, because it's, uh, it's imperative that we get information out. I think the process here that we had after the planning commission, uh, in where we engaged the residents, went out to the community, uh, I think it, it produced a better product. And I do want to thank both our, uh, our planning commission, um, members, and I saw Commissioner LaFossa who had voted against the project in the planning commission, um, here, um, and also our planning staff. I want to thank all of you for taking that, the hard work and actually, uh, accepting the project and me, and looking at what, what it meant to the community and also creating a public hearing. Because I think many folks forget that the planning commission process is, is a public hearing process. Uh, and in that timeframe, uh, listening to the dissenting commissioners, uh, listening to the opposition of our, of our residents, um, you could clearly tell that I think, that even though our policy on planning and zoning is to, um, have a mixed-use kind of place or community, that even the commercial C1 zoning missed the mark in the, in our neighborhood. I think the outcomes of what could happen in a neighborhood like that, that's kind of developed and evolved, and it isn't 1945 anymore, um, makes the point that, that when we're doing infill or looking at an old project, that we do need to take an extra time. Uh, so thank you, planning staff. Thank you, planning commissioners, and thank you, most importantly, for the, the, all the neighbors who took the time to be engaged on this, uh, and, and are doing this in their own time with their own competing issues. But what I think, uh, we have come to, uh, is an alternative option, that even though it doesn't meet our, our city in, uh, planning staff guidelines and our planning commission recommendation, um, addresses the major things that I've heard in our, uh, from the public. One, we love the character of our neighborhoods and we don't want to do anything to change that. So it's imperative that we look at zoning options that are fit for that type of use. I think that the RO zoning, after learning about how restrictive it is, that you can't even have retail use on it, uh, so even the old market in 1945, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, would that be allowed in today's date? No. So not, not even that. Uh, even an H&R Block, which is a retail space, is that correct?
That would be a commercial service versus-
Oh, it would be a commercial service.
An individual tax preparer would be allowed.
So I think you, when you mentioned, uh, the tax preparer, I was concerned because what about an H&R Block? You know, that, but, uh, so even that is, that fits outside of that, correct? So I think, I think the RO zoning provides that. Additionally, we know that the space is limited and after looking at the, the, the structure itself, um, ensuring that we don't have that, uh, that creep, the restriction to the 33 square feet of the property, uh, and also, I think I heard a resident say, uh, that UC Davis has really swallowed up a big chunk of that community, the old state fairgrounds and whatnot. While we get the benefits of a medical office space, uh, and medical jobs and everything thereby, there are impacts that come with it. You know, I get the helicopter over my neighborhood. I live adjacent also nearby, so I get it. Uh, so restricting, I think, of the medical office and clinic space addresses that issue. Uh, and finally, I think adding the issue on, on the signage, because it will be a business use and we want to make sure that, you know, that we keep the, the digital billboards down over by the arena and not, uh, uh, not in our, uh, that the sign, the signage goes through the actual design review and not, uh, and not in a residential area. Lastly, you know, I do think that whether this proposal and whether the, the council approves this project or not, the traffic issues are a concern that happen right now and are happening currently. And so I think to confi, confine, uh, can mix those with this proposal, given the size and the restriction of it, um, are, are irrelevant to the project itself. But, um, with my, with my, uh, my direction here, uh, and Antonio, you've, you've heard this, is to look at that, uh, that area and have staff already begin to look at the, the problems we have with parking, with, uh, traffic enforcement. If you have people who are, who are basically not stopping at that stop sign, and I've seen it before when I've been at the market, uh, making sure that we have traffic enforcement, uh, and the appropriate, uh, zoning of that parking. In my opinion, I, I think that, uh, that the no parking 4:00 to 6:00 PM is an, an appropriate option in front of that area. I've seen when cars got to make a left turn. But I'll leave that, I think, for staff to find out what the appropriate, uh, what the appropriate remedy there should be, regardless of whether this project moves forward. So I'll, I'll end with saying that I think we, uh, you know, one, uh, I heard the, the neighbors, what is the future of, what could happen in the future of this project? And clearly, um, having C1 is not, uh, a viable option. But I do think that we meet both what some, you heard some residents ask for and what the applicant is asking for, and meet the major concerns that the opposition is asking for with the alternative proposal, which is the RO zoning as identified in the staff. And with that, I'll, I'll move the, uh, the alternative proposal to the planning commission's recommendation, um, with the direction to staff to begin to look at the parking and the safety concerns in that area.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Garrett. It's been moved. Is there a second on the motion? Second by Councilmember Carr, but we have other council members and I know I have a question. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, when I look at this proposal in its entirety, and I have tracked it from the beginning, because one of the players in this is Sue Brown, who works for Mr. Casno, who used to be district director in my district. And, um, so I've been aware of it right from the get-go. I would say that this process is indicative of a very functional system. I think that this compromise truly addresses, uh, the concerns that have been raised. When, when you say that rezoning to an RO is the objectionable piece, you know, I would say this, you could have a home business by permit anywhere in Elmhurst and as such, that business could be visited by up to eight people per day. And that's by permit. The unique configuration of this building is very self-limiting. And I really cannot foresee a use that would be damaging to the neighbor, neighborhood in the future. If you think about the Cottage Mart, which ma, many people embrace in the neighborhood, if that were a residence today and somebody wanted to put a market in, what would you be saying about that use? And yet, it's worked out very well. Uh, this space was at one point a commercial space, but at 700 square feet, restricted to an office use, I really can't think of any use that would be damaging to the neighborhood. They do have three spaces in front of the garage, uh, impacting, parking on the street will likely not be an issue. And I can say that, you know, Mr. Casno and his staff, I think, are unimpeachable as, as far as being good players in the neighborhood. So I would like to thank Councilmember Garrett. You know, I know it's tough to take a decision in the face of a lot of opposition of your constituents. It's not an easy thing to do, I know, because I've done it. But every once in a while, you come to a project like this where you really don't see harm in it and yet, that you've got a great player in the neighborhood. So I'm speaking in support of your motion.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Carr.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a question on the signage. What type of signage will be permitted on the building?
Could you give us a moment to, to look that up?
Again?
We're, we're looking that up now, but any signage that would have to, would be erected on that parcel would go through the design review process and would be subject, uh, to both, uh, design on the building and as it relates to the surrounding community.
That apply to the signs that we allow businesses to put in the window?
Yes, yes. Um, any signage that's on the building, that would go through the designer view process.
And that ordinance allow, uh, businesses to put signs in windows as long as they're of a particular size?
Um, office may allow, I think, a, a four-square-foot signage if it's in the window. So for, for each street frontage, it allows a four-by-four sign, um, and that would be subject to design review.
They would have to take that to the design review to get that, put that sign in?
Yes.
Okay. I think Mr. Harris addressed the issue of future uses. Uh, I have to go and look at this because I've received so many letters and telephone calls from, uh, the people in the community. I had to go drive through it. And I agree with Mr. Harris that there are not a lot of properties situated that have these characteristics that would allow themselves to be used as an office in that neighborhood. And so I don't see this as a, uh, something that will be repeated over and over again and that would, uh, as someone phrased it, "Open a can of worms," that each house in, uh, Elmh, on that area would become, uh, commercial property. Uh, I think that this is a reasonable compromise, uh, to what the citizens of the area were concerned about, uh, as long as they can keep the signage from being intrusive, uh, in the neighborhood. I think it's a good, good compromise. Good job, Mr. Garrett.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Carr, I'd like to compliment Councilmember Garrett as well for grappling with a, a difficult situation and, um, obviously, you have the respect of everybody, even those that might oppose, uh, your motion. I just want to just dig a little bit deeper on the precedent issue, which is what I hear the opponents talking about most. I think, I would assume that if there was another application for a rezon to C1, that is the council member for the district, given this experience and where you got to, you would look at this with, uh, great skepticism, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, well, I would, right.
Particularly, and I think our staff would probably agree.
Yes, and that any, anybody else who wanted to rezon even, uh, to the RO zoning that's now before us would have to come before the planning commission and ultimately the city council if the neighbors, uh, any neighbors objected, correct? Yeah, right. And in terms of the uses here, as, as I understand, Councilmember Harris, if the owner of this particular property decided to sell, there would be very limited, uh, uses, office uses at play for whoever bought the property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, please call the rule on the motion. I think I just called the rule.
All right, so we'll go this way. We'll start with Member Ashby.
Aye.
Warren is absent. Harris?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Chenere?
Aye.
Gara?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
There.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Motion passes eight to nothing. Thank you all for coming to City Hall and participating. Yes. Okay, we'll take, we're not going to get up, but we'll wait 30 seconds for, if people could pli, if people could please, please file out quietly, we'd appreciate it. Or not. Okay. Again, now I'm going to really ask, hold on here, Chris. Ask everybody if you could please, uh, we have more business here tonight, if everybody could please file out quietly, we would sure appreciate it. Very good. Very good, very, very good. Okay, back to order here. We now move to, uh, calendar item three with the clerk. Do you need to read that?
I do.
Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Yes, so this is the Department of Parks and Recreation Youth Services Programs, our first discussion calendar item. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Conlin.
Thank you, sir.
I hope this isn't controversial.
Not at all, sir. And I'll keep it to four and a half minutes, per your guidance.
Yes, please. Thank you very much. Welcome. And we've got this, this, uh, chart before you to just keep everyone apprised of the running number of summer internships we're, we, we are creating. Um, and again, we intend most of those, if not all of them, to be year-round, summer and then, uh, and then throughout the year for high school seniors, but we'll get to that in a minute. Mr. Conlin.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, our city manager and public, uh, thank you for the opportunity to breathe this important initiative. Today, we're discussing an exciting bid for our youth and a solid investment in their future. Our mayor and city manager tasked the Department of Parks and Recreation with finding a set of substantive, quick-win programs to execute with one-time funds. The department responded in short order with four decisive measures to meet those requirements and respond to our youth development needs. First, some background. Your Parks and Recreation Department has historically been involved with youth development through education, recreation, and targeted programming-like internships, as well as by providing enabling infrastructure like parks, pools, and community centers. In fact, we provide our diverse catalog of programs and services to over 80,000 young people a year. As was discussed last week, our funding for Parks and Recreation program facilities dropped precipitously, starting nine years ago with the Great Recession. Despite this challenge, fully two-thirds of our current staff provide youth services and 45% of our budget is supporting our 26 youth programs. Our department is currently developing a strategic plan. A key component of that plan is the better alignment of these youth programs and services into a developmental continuum. We call this a cradle to career pathway. This graphic shows the linkage of our current youth programming into a progressive pathway for our youth. It takes advantage of our many opportunities to influence, educate, and mentor our young people from the first time they come into contact with our offerings until they are ready for full-time employment. We're creating a pathway to success with signposts along the way that build personal and ultimately professional skills. Using this concept, we targeted a critical juncture of this pathway in our teen programs. We understand that early shaping of our youth as toddlers and pre-teens is optimal, but we also know that our teenagers are the most vulnerable to being pulled off the right path. As I said in our earlier discussion, we lost critical programming nine years ago. Much of our current teenage population went without the benefits of those pre-existing programs when the Great Recession hit hardest. These five programs target those teens with a variety of life and job skill training opportunities, along with reinforcing paid internships to focus them on a productive future. So here's what this investment will bring. We start with our very popular Landscape and Learning Program. This internship pays youth aides to work in five-person crews for seven weeks to help maintain our parks. Each participant also receives job soft skills training, such as resume writing, interviews, professional practices, and active mentoring. By purchasing 10 trucks for this program, we can redirect funding from leasing our trucks to hiring 25 additional crew members and their support staff. The best part is this one-time investment keeps giving back throughout the 10-year lifespan of these trucks. That equates to 250 additional interns over the next decade. Next, we expand our primetime teen and young leaders Next, we expand our Primetime Teen and Young Leaders of Tomorrow programs, providing 200 additional youth between the ages of 10 to 18 with critical life skills and job skill training, as well as a $200 stipend for successful completion. Additionally, we invest in an enhanced youth employment fair to bring in over 50 employers who will engage with our applying youth. Our plan is to prepare 750 students for this fair and to provide up to 200 paid internships to successful candidates by either providing them a full $300 stipend or reinforcing employers' commitments with a $150 match. Just last week, our Neighborhood Services Division met with over 60 nonprofit organizations and government agencies who were interested in learning about our process of becoming intern host sites. Our last bid for success is to reinforce our successful hotspots by offering more variety of programming opportunities. Basketball is our current big draw, but options like dance, band, and street soccer appeal to more diverse populations. Our goal is to be as inclusive as possible with this growing venue. To answer a burning question, here's our timeline for implementation and delivery. For Landscape and Learning, the key piece is buying trucks. The good news is that we can still make the fleet purchase order for this year. So with your approval, we can field the trucks by June. Everything else starts in April and May, and March, with our staff already leaning forward to make this happen. Last point. I've just made several commitments in this proposal. Upon your approval, those are now part of our success metrics. We intend to report back to this council as we achieve those metrics. Subject to your questions?
Many questions.
Yes, sir.
Many plaudits here, but let's, let's start with Councilmember Harris. Oh, we do have a lot of public comment. Pardon me. Go ahead.
Okay, so we'll start with three at a time? Is that good?
Yep.
The first one is La Majesty McClellan, Maricela Vella, Denager Gil, and Beverly Gil.
Come on up, please. You have two minutes, but just brief, brief is good. Thank you. We welcome you.
Well, hi, everyone. My name is La Majesty McClellan. I, my first job was with the LNL, and I worked with the LNL summer 2015. Then from there, I met Monica, Monica and Luz. They gave me a job at the WIWA, which hooked me up with the City Hall. My experience with the LNL was a real good experience. It taught me how to work well with others and handle conflict well and go to, go to work and actually, you know, do something with my life than Facebooking. So I'm really thankful for that program because it showed me how to grow up and mature within myself and within my community.
What are you doing now?
Now I work for the City Hall on the third floor as an intern.
You're glad. Thank you for testifying. Thank you, La Majesty.
Hello. My name is Maricela Vella, and I have been with the city now for six years. I started with a CPRS conference, which is a leadership conference. Then that brought me to WIWA, which landed me my first job. I've been with the city even when I didn't know it, volunteering at the Oak Park Community Center when I was 17. And then following that, got hooked, didn't know I had a knack for working with the community and working with kids. I got hired the next summer, and I went above and beyond for my job, as my supervisors have went above and beyond to help me grow. I have moved up through the city to senior, senior rec, and then now a program leader through transfers and budget cuts. My supervisors and staff have always been so supportive in helping me to get where I need to be. Now I am pursuing a career in law enforcement, and they still help me to always check up and make sure that I have everything that I need, connecting me with the right people, and making sure that they're checking up on the process. So I definitely thank Parks and Recreation, and you've heard my, you know, some of my story now, but to see my story is to hear the laughter that the kids have, see all the hands in a youth huddle, and come to my center and see all of the supervisors and my department supervisors help everybody grow as I see them. So, thanks.
You and your colleagues are what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Dejaneg Gil. I've been actually with George Sims since I was like 12, and now I'm 17. Would I stand behind a lot of people back there when I said we need this money for these programs? Because these programs have, you know, changed a lot of these kids' lives, and it's changed my life. I used to be so shy, and now I've blossomed into speaking in front of the mayor, basically. So, um, most of these, I've been through, you know, Landscape and Learning Primetime Teen, you know? I even, I participate in Hot Spot, and a lot of these really do impact the children and young teens, too. To be honest, that, all of that right there would really help them out. I'm not even lying. Because, you know, Landscape and Learning, you know, it helps, you know, repetition, you know? Go get up on Saturday and Sunday, you know, and when it's seasonal. Or in the summer, get up in the morning, you know, and then go to work, you know? It's repetition, it's repetition. And that's, it impacts, you know, young people's lives because repetition is key for us, you know? Because we get up, we go to school, we go home, you know?
Thank you for testifying. You did great. You did great. You're eloquent. Thank you.
Hey, guys. I'm Beverly Gil. I, I don't know how young I was when I actually started going to a community center, but I was pretty young, and I was with my sisters, so I'd say about around 10. But honestly, it's actually put me into being a young adult. I've actually gotten more responsible and less childish than I was. And now I'm 16, and I'm waiting to apply at the community center that I go to to work with little kids. And honestly, I feel like we need this money because without any money or any doing anything for any of our programs, then there's going to be a lot of kids on the streets that don't have stuff to do during the day, isn't really active during the day. But, thank you, guys.
Next group of speakers will be Mackenzie Jackson Coell, Karen Gomez, Delana Farmer, Ricky Richards, and Malik Rashid.
Please.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Jackson, and I've been with George Sims Community Center since I was six years old. And now I'm 14, and I go back every summer, and ever since then, I volunteer. And the funding that we need for these programs, it's because we go every day during the summer, during the school year, too, and it's the fact of you getting to see what an impact you're making on kids' lives. We've had kids in the foster care system who haven't been in the best situations, and it's the fact that they come to us, and it's like we're helping them. We're giving them a chance so they know that they're more than just what they're being told at home. And not only that, but we're giving them an opportunity. We're telling them that you're, you can be more than what you see on TV. You can really pursue something. You could be up here at the city council. You can be doing everything that you dream of doing. It doesn't just have to be a dream. And it's changed my life. I feel like just being in these programs, like I said, I've been through all of it. And now I volunteer. When I turn 16, I'm going to apply for a job at George Sims Community Center, as long as these programs are still around, as long as I still get to go every day during the summer to see all these kids' smiling faces, to know that what I'm doing is making an impact, not only on me and changing me, but making an impact on the community and making it just a better place, to know that we're getting kids off of the streets during the summer and giving them something to do. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great job, great job, Mackenzie.
Yeah, Hope?
You're good.
Everyone can hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Karen Gomez. I represent the city at large with U.S. Sacramento Youth Commission. I'm here this evening to speak on the benefits of Parks and Recreation in the Neighborhood Services Division. It is the Neighborhood Services Division that staffs and cares for the Sacramento Youth Commission. The Youth Commission was established to assist in the promotion of city services and functions related to youth, and that's why I'm here this evening, to assist in the promotion of Parks and Recreation. One of the items I would like to promote is the upcoming annual Job Fair for Youth and Young Adults. The Job Fair not only provides employers and employees an opportunity to meet and interview, it also assists the youth and young adults attending the event with job readiness resources such as interview techniques, resume writing, and dressing for success. The Sacramento Youth Commission, under the guidance of Neighborhood Services, will be assisting with the annual Job Fair and providing outreach to Sacramento-area youth and young adults. Our outreach efforts will include presenting the Job Fair, Summer Internships, Hot Spot Program, and the Sacramento Youth Commission at local schools through classroom presentations and lunchtime information tables, social media, and having all those that attend the Job Fair register with Eventbrite. Through these efforts, we hope to reach our goal of 750 youth and young adults at this one-day event. I hope to see you at our Job Fair, April 1st, here at City Hall, and thank you for your time.
Karen, good job. That's right. Give her a round of applause. Karen, you've been on the Youth Commission for how long now?
This is my first year, but my term will end next year.
And you're in what district?
I represent the city at large.
Oh, city at large, okay. But you live in District 7, right?
Yes, I live in District 7.
I just want to make sure I take ownership of you. And you'll tell all the youth that are here tonight how, what opportunity it is to get on the Youth Commission. Anybody who comes up and talks to you, you'll tell them about applying for the Youth Commission and how they, one day, can serve on that as well, right?
Yes, definitely.
All right, all of y'all, go see Karen at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Give her another big round of applause. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Delana Farmer. And, um, starting off as Primetime Teen with Mr. Matt and Mr. Chu was a really great opportunity to me. I was new to Sacramento. I got to interact with like a lot of children. It was very diverse. I learned how to like time management. I learned how to do, how to make a resume. I never knew how to make a resume, so that was really key information for me. We did a lot of like team exercises, and even we had a community day. We all had to create it, propose the ideas, find out if we could, and if we couldn't do things, and we had to make it happen for ourselves. So it was a great way of perseverance and leadership and things like that. And LNL, that was one of the best opportunities I've ever had in my whole entire life, honestly. I'd never had any job experience before that. So when I got into that, I had to go to a real job interview. I had to dress in the attire. And although I didn't have to make a resume, I still had to speak as if I was going to a professional job interview. So that was a really big deal. We had to take time out of our weekends to wake up in the morning, and I just loved the full experience. It gave me strength and hope. Thank you.
So real quick, before you go?
Yes.
Did you get the job?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Hello. My name is Malik Rashid. I've, I've been in most of the programs as a kid. I've been since elementary school to middle school. And even in middle of high school, I did, I joined LNL, which taught me to prepare for an interview, got dressed up, went to the interview, answered a lot of good questions. Once I got the job, it taught me how to save my own money. Held, held me accountable to help out for bills at the house, about my own stuff. It taught me basically responsibility. And overall, I feel like it taught me more to give back to the community, how we clean multiple parks, and taught me how to appreciate the people that cleaned up our parks. And I just want to give a quick shout-out to Luz, Kim, Monica, just for keeping me in the city. Taught me, I did LNL, WIWA. I didn't do Primetime Teen. But I've, I can say that they've seen me grow from a child to working and getting my own money to still working for the city. And I believe LNL, I work in a middle school, and I encourage my kids as soon as they get of age to join LNL so they can earn their own money, help out with family. You want your own things, you have to pay for it yourself. And, yeah. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ricky Richards, and I have been in programs since I was about 10 years old. I've been in children's programs from McKinley Park to Hagenwood Park to South Natomas. And through it all, the city has just helped me grow up to be the person I am today. In my first year of high school, I became part of the LNL program. I was lucky enough to even get an interview. And even that was amazing to me because I had no type of job skills even before that. The interview process was crazy. That was the first time I ever had anybody ask me what I was going to do with my money, because that would be the first time I had my own money, and it wasn't my parents' money. So that was a big thing to me. And then when I finally got the job, and I had to wake up in those early mornings all on my own, wake up my mom to drop me off, and then go through a hard day's labor, that was a big change for me. It changed from sitting on the couch watching cartoons in the morning to getting up and doing an honest job, cleaning up our parks. And that really made a difference in my life. And when I got the opportunity to try out Primetime Teens, and they said they'd help me better my job skills. And that included learning how to write a resume, learning how to write a cover letter, learning how to just go up and ask, hey, are you guys hiring? Can I have an application? And all those skills helped me to get the job that I have today. I now work for the South Natomas Community Center as a rec aid. I've been doing it for three years, and I really enjoy it. And it not only helps you with job, jobs and getting jobs, it also helps you in other facets of life. It, doing the Primetime Teens helped me figure out that I wanted to go to college, that I wanted to do something better with my life. I am now in my third year at Sacramento State University, accepting my bachelor's in mechanical engineering. And I don't think I would have been the same person I am today if I wouldn't have been in the city programs all my life.
You're going to school and you're working, so you've learned how to balance the entire workload.
Yep.
Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to read the remaining so that you can line up. There's several of you. Emmanuel Hargrave is next, Tristina McFadden, Michael Brim, Bella Nyothsum, Philip Dixon, Dewayne Ewing Jr., and the last one, it looks like Juice Herr.
Good evening.
Good evening. So thank you, City Council, for having me here today. So I'm here to speak on half of Parks and Recs like everyone else. First, I want to start with my story. I became Sacramento in the year of 2011, and thanks to Sylvia and Parks and Recs, they gave me an open eye to the city. Because at first, I was just new to the city. I didn't know much. But they had an open-eyed gym, which was for the community itself, which gave me part of the life system of how Sacramento works. And through that, they got me through the LNL program. And from the LNL program, you go in as a stranger, but you come out with a family. Because you've got a lot of people just like yourself that come from a low-income family, don't know much about a job, don't know much about what's going to happen when you get there. But as you go on, you learn to bond with them. You go through different experiences. They're there to help you, and it's been a real great thing for me. I was in part of the Hot, the Team Program, but my little sisters, they were. And it gave a great experience to them. And then the Hot Spots, that's another thing, also for the community, because it's a place where we can go, somewhere we feel safe, somewhere we know we can enjoy life without being worried about anything else happening to us. I believe that if you help with the Team Program or the LNL Program, or just to support this matters, not only supporting their kids' future, but just more in Sacramento's future. You've got still younger kids who want to learn life lessons one way or another. And just the Team Program itself is another life lesson for the good, not just the bad itself. And then another thing I just want to point out is that LNL itself is a life lesson because, like I said, the interviews you go through, they're not easy interviews. You don't know who's grading you. You don't know the person, but you got to speak from your heart. If you speak from your heart, you're likely to get the job. And once you get the job, you got to learn that. You got to be there early. You got to work hard. You got to make sure you're on time, because it's like a life job. You miss a day, that's a miss of pay. And you just got to be ready for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you have definitely spoke from your heart, and you've done a great job. And I've been noticing that all, a lot of the students who have spoke have gone and spoken to a young lady in the audience by the name of Sylvia Fort, and I want her to stand up because she deserves a round of applause. Good job, Emmanuel. They have taught you well, and I tell you, when you need a job in City Hall, you come see me.
I will.
All right, my brother.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First and foremost, I would like to thank you all for everything you do. My name is Tristina McFadden. I graduated from Grant Union High School. I currently work the District 2 and 3 Hot Spot Programs located at Norwood and Rio Tierra Junior High School. The Hot Spot Program is a Friday night basketball program that runs from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. for boys and girls ages 13 to 19, looking to have Friday night fun. In our program, we provide snacks, water, board games, music, Kofi passes, and registration forms for all of our participants. We also provide security to help keep our youth and staff safe. Hot Spot is a fun, productive, and organized program for our youth in the community. This program maintains a safe environment, which allows parents to not have to worry about their children and if they are okay and safe. As for myself, I am a very active person in my Del Paso Heights community. I volunteer in various programs and activities throughout the year, and try to provide different and positive opportunities for all youth. As I close, I would again like to thank each and every one of you for all that you do, and all of your hard work, dedication, and leadership you all provide for our communities in the City of Sacramento, and lastly, for allowing me to speak in front of you all today. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. McFadden.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Philip Dixon. I have, I'm born and raised in Sacramento. I have attended the District 2 Hot Spot Center since I was 13. And when I was 13, and I, and I didn't know about the Hot Spot, I used to just be doing anything I could, just to have fun, running around with my cousins, smoking, doing anything else. When I met, when I got to Hot Spot, I first learned about it, I was pretty new to it. I didn't really know what to do. So I started meeting new people, started going every other day now. And, one day, I started actually playing. I started learning to love the sport of basketball. Then, after that, I've just been different since. So, how can I put this? Imagine a 13-year-old living his day, living his life, thinking about death every day, thinking about how he could, how his life could end, how it could change. If it wasn't for Hot Spot, I probably wouldn't be here right now. I am 16-year-old, 16-years-old today.
Day.
Mm-hmm.
Happy birthday, young man.
Thank you. That's not it. Whenever I, whenever I see, whenever I see somebody, somebody new at Hot Spot, I pick them up in the game, see if they want to play, and if they're good, beat them a 21. And for those who don't know about Hot Spot yet, it's at Rio Tierra, 7 o'clock, Fridays.
All right.
Anybody who want to get hoop? Anybody who want to play me?
I got you, Philip. So, so Philip.
I was almost scared I wasn't going to be able to reach this. Okay. Hello, and good evening. My name is Bella Nyotsam. I am a resident of the Del Paso Heights community, also known as District 2.
Hey, Ollie.
Um, oh, I probably said his name wrong. And I have lived in the community all my life. In 2015, I graduated from Grant Union High School. Now I am currently working for the City of Sacramento under Neighborhood Services at the Rio Tierra Hot Spot Program. This program is honestly a great way to keep teenagers safe on a Friday night. Something positive that I've noticed working for the Hot Spot Program is improvement with the teenagers' behavior as they attend the program weekly. They are less aggressive with each other, more helpful, and more respectful with their peers, and also with our staff. That was so short, but I'm done.
Oh, you did a great job. Great job.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. My name is Michael Graham.
Promoted me already. I love it. I do.
A longtime Sacramento resident, current resident of Council District 8. And I, my first contact with programming city programs was when I was in high school. I went to some Parks, a teen center, run through the Parks and Rec. I also, as a, as a college student, worked for Parks and Recreation, so I know and am still in contact with a lot of people in the room, Sylvia Fort, Kim Moller, are some of my favorite people. So I am like a living example of, of, of the benefits of youth attending programs like the Hot Spot Program. As a matter of fact, I think the very first Hot Spot Program, it wasn't called Hot Spot, it was called something else.
That's right.
Yeah. I worked at that program, and I distinctly remember Mayor Steinberg coming, along with the previous mayor, rest in peace, Joe Serna, to a grand opening, and that was back in, I think, maybe '94 or '95. And you made an impact on, on, on myself, longtime supporter. But the, the benefits go without saying, and I can't speak on the benefits more than the youth have that came to speak before me, for the Hot Spot Program. And then also, just the benefits of the LNL Program, things, you know, the job readiness skills, the soft skills that these youth learn, to kind of put them at that same level to be able to compete for, you know, to be in the workforce. I can't stress the importance of that. I believe you guys know that as, as well. So I'm just here to just speak and lend my support to, to those programs.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and Council members. My name is Dwayne Ewing, and I'm a student at Sacramento University also. And I'm also the outreach coordinator for the Oak Park Community Center. I was called up here to pretty much tell a little bit about my story, and tell you guys what I think about the Parks and Recreation Department. I moved here from Oakland in 2013 to attend college. My cousins offered me to live with them. I moved out here, and about a month after moving, I was offered a position through someone I knew to get a job at the Oak Park Community Center, which I've been working for the past four years. I started off as a recreation aide, working in the rec and teen programs, pretty much just hands-on with the kids. And that experience, it helped me mold myself into a leader as I was molding the youth into leaders. I eventually transitioned into being a coach, and now I'm doing outreach coordinating, pretty much going out to schools, trying to build partnerships with local organizations and businesses. I had a meeting with Sac High earlier, the principal, talking to her about ways that we could fill our programs with more youth and build a bridge. And overall, the importance of the Parks and Recreation Department is tremendous. You know, I've worked with hundreds of kids since I've been out here, and I'm still in contact with them. And them seeing me in college and seeing the things I'm doing, it's giving them a visual representation of what they can become, and I take pride in that. And under the current structure of the Parks and Recreation Program, and the way the whole department is ran, looking for, with the proper steps, as long as we take the proper steps we need towards innovation and continuing outreach to meet the demands of the technological era that we're now living in, I see a lot of great things. So I think the investment should be put towards improving the areas that we don't, that we need the improvement in, and to continue to build upon what we have, looking towards inclusion and development moving forward. So, thank you, guys.
Good job, Dwayne. Good job.
Good evening. My name is Jules Her. I actually grew up in, in the slums of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, where all I knew was nothing but constant chaos. And, and my peers, I remember we were, I grew up where kids were constantly fighting over superiority, over money, pride, and relationships, where, where majority of my life, we grew up without electricity, without running water, you know? So for me, the Landscape and Learning Program, when I moved here two years ago, has really taught me, has really taught me skills that I would never have learned in school. I would have never learned to be social. I would have never learned to network, how, how to problem solve. That stuff school would never teach me, you know? Another thing, another thing too is that I've always, growing up, everyone always told me that I wasn't going to be anything, because my father is, is a crazy man. But everyone has always told me that I would never be anything. But Landscape and Learning Program has really taught, like, really showed me my worth. So now I'm, I'm enrolled in San Francisco State University, and I'm going to be going to college soon.
Congratulations.
I'm an, I'm an entrepreneur, so I hope to get into real estate soon. And I'm starting my, I'm starting my clothing business. So I'm real, I feel like the Landscape and Learning Program has really taught me to really network, because without networking, I wouldn't have met the people, the people I've met. I wouldn't have been where I am today. During, during that program, I, I got into, I had a, like, a big disagreement with one of my coworkers, which I handled the situation really, really immaturely, and I've learned from that. And now, if I can go back, I would definitely, definitely say that I wouldn't, I'm, I wouldn't be who I am today without learning those skills. As for, I could have handled the situation in a, in a better, accordingly manner, so.
Good job, Jule. Good job. So as the mayor comes back to the podium, let's give all of our speakers a big round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for chairing that portion of it appropriate, given all you do in the community for young people. So, tonight we heard about the expanded LNL Program and the outstanding work the Department of Parks and Recreation does, and I just want to say thank you, you know? And we're talking about a lot of different approaches, parks, recreation, youth development, all under one umbrella here, right? We want to provide more opportunities for young people. But I wanted to just sort of illustrate to everybody the magnitude of what we are planning here for the summer a, and beyond, in terms of this internship opportunity. And I know that there are some different approaches. The LNL has a bit of a different approach. And it would be great, over time, if we could not standardize the experience, but if we could find ways to bring all this together under one umbrella. Because what we intend to do here with the ETP, which is the state grant, the city match, of course, Summer at City Hall, there's a couple of other grants, we think we have the opportunity to provide this summer over 1,000 work experiences where young people will get eight weeks of job training and job experience. And then for the ETP and the city match, and hopefully for as much of the other money as we can, a guarantee from employers, and these will be private sector as well as public sector employers, that they will employ these young people at least 10 hours a week during the following school year. And we're talking about young people who are juniors going into their senior year. So imagine 1,200 young people getting that year-round experience in areas that are related to their career interests. This is the opening, along with the infrastructure questions we're talking about, the Councilmember Shneer has brought forward around how we organize our city, to really fulfill the promise of making this a city foreign about youth. And the reason I wanted to say all that is a plea to anyone watching and all my colleagues here. We are going to need employers. We have the City of Sacramento. We know how to reach them, Parks and Recreation. But we need private sector employers who are willing to step up and provide some of these internships. And we're going to provide a lot of the, quote, "infrastructure." We're going to make it easy for them in terms of payroll and how we go about doing it. But it's going to be a massive undertaking between now and June the 15th, in order to get 1,000 or more slots, mostly from private employers, to commit to this eight weeks of summer, and then a minimum of 10 hours a week during the student's senior year. So we're going to be calling on the big industries, we're going to be calling on the small businesses, we're going to be calling on the other public agencies, because this opportunity is right in front of us, and we have raised together over the last 10 weeks, now almost $3 million. So we have the money, or at least a lot of money. And now, between the Parks and Recreation Department and the State Employment Training Panel and our city's general fund, we can make this happen, but it's going to require an all-hands-on-deck approach. So this is a big piece of it, and we thank you. Let's hear from other members. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, that was a pretty powerful testimony. I think that you heard a lot about the value of these programs to the lives of our youth. So first and foremost, I'd like to move the, the resolution and the seven attendant specifications for it, so all eight aspects of the staff recommendation. You know, I was on the Parks Commission when the recession hit, and the, the first part of Parks and Rec that went was the youth programs. You know, we wanted to maintain our parks, but the youth really got the short end of the stick. Sylvia's shaking her head yes. She knows what I'm talking about. It was heartbreaking, because you can see how important these programs are to our youth. When you think about it, giving a young person their first chance at employment, and the self-esteem that that brings, and the discipline that that brings, and you can see the results. I mean, look at these young people and what they went on to achieve. So, you know, it's very powerful medicine. It certainly fits with the values that our mayor and Councilmember Shneer are putting forward, which is investing in our youth, which is, obviously brings great dividends. And anyway, as, as a member of the Parks Commission, ultimately the chair, it brings me great satisfaction to move an item that will bolster the Parks and Rec Department, but specifically the youth program. So I'm pretty excited about this. You know, I actually, I served on the panel to screen LNL applicants. And for me, that was an incredibly rewarding job, to meet these young folks who came for the first time. And here am I, a guy sitting in a suit and tie, right? And they were scared to death of me. And, you know, it was a wonderful learning experience for me, talking to these kids who were, like, interviewing for their first job. Some pretty interesting experiences ensued. But it was really tough to turn any one of them down, just the fact that they had the gumption to get themselves to that interview. I wanted to snap them all up. But now we can get a few more, and, and we're going to reap the dividends of that. So, you know, I, I love our Parks and Rec Department, and the youth component is so valuable and something that's needed attention for a long time. So this is very exciting. I'll just end by, with the CPRS motto, which is Parks Make Life Better.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'd like to second the motion first. The second thing is, I was trying to put myself back into the shoes of some of the people that were at the podium, because I was a kid who tried to figure out what my path was going to be. And I know that work was an important thing for me to learn about myself, about other people, about how to make a living. But most of the time, we expect young people to work without compensation. And I think that that doesn't always send the right message about how you lift your vision for yourself up, because I think that the key piece of this, Mr. Mayor, is that these are jobs that come with pay.
Yes.
And it, somebody out there said, you don't, I, I can't say it as well. I think it's this young man in the green. You don't show up one day, you don't get paid that day, right? That is a life lesson that you will never forget. When you work hourly, which most of my first jobs were, I knew that if I didn't work, I didn't get paid. It's a very simple relationship. And while I disagreed very much with the former governor's politics most of the time, Ronald Reagan said the best social program is a job. And I think, listening to the community tonight, we can disagree with a lot of what he said, but it's clear that our community says we need jobs, and that's what we want to empower ourselves, and I can't help but say yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, sitting in the seat and listening to each student come down and talk, and listening to them speak with the confidence that each one of them came up, with the articulation, and to be able to express how the program has helped them to be more responsible, how it taught them how to get up and it taught them how to get up in the morning and, and get to work, and taught them how to do a good day's work and be an example to others who are looking up to them. Their communication skills, obviously, were improved as a result of doing what they did during that year, and their ability to lead others. And, and then, one, one guy really talked about the money management aspect of it, that it's, it's not about just making money, but it's learning how to manage that money and manage it responsibly, responsibly. And so to hear all those skills that were being articulated when they came to the audience and to hear each one of them come up with confidence, just, it did make my heart feel good, because I have been in this work for a long time. And, and to see our kids come up and one day know that they will sit in this seat and they will sit in the seats of our employees who work for the city of Sacramento right now and take the responsibility of leading this city for years on after we have decided that, you know, it's our time to retire and sit down. And, and I feel like we're leaving Sacramento in better hands. I see, I see, I feel better tonight than I've felt in a long time about the hands that we're leading, whether they're serving on the youth commission or whether they're working in some of the programs or taking advantage of the hotspots. It's powerful to see what our youth are doing and, and the future that they have for themselves. So if I could third it, I'd third it, but I can't do that.
Draw my second.
So, I'm just, it's, it's, I just want to applaud each one of them who came up and spoke. And, and there was one young man who talked about smoking, that he smoked when he was 13. And, and you got away from me before you, before I got a chance to ask you the question, which I already think I know the answer, is that you can't beat anybody smoking, so I know at 16, you're not doing that anymore, right? That's right. Give him a big round of applause, please.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, you know, I've got to say that, you know, it's just inspiring to hear all these stories. I think the testament to what the city's mission and, and what we believe in our youth is right here. They have been the example, I think, of what we're, where we need to grow and where we need to be at as a city. And to be so eloquent, frankly, because at, at their age, you know, and even, even today, I don't know if I could be that articulate, to really express, you know, the, the needs that are out there and what we still have to support. I think, if anything, that, that we can see out here is that we're linking youth to further youth about the future. And it gives me great pride to see some of our Sac State Hornets out there, Go Hornets, to, exactly, yes, fingers up, to, to show that, that college is attainable to anyone, you know? To making sure that it, it's a real, it's not just a mantra that you hear in classroom, but you see someone that's in front of you every day caring about your safety, caring about your future progress, and to become that, that example. And that goes, that goes further than any, any fancy flyer or mail piece that, that a college will ever put out. And the last piece is that I'm glad that our Parks Department is looking at a more innovative way about, of supporting our youth. We have to get away from this almost warehousing idea of just having youth involved in rec programs without any future use. I think every program that we have with youth has to involve an understanding of what the future holds for them, unleashing their capital, unleashing their dreams and, and their possibilities, to a point where they can say, I can't even dream of what I can be, because I can be just about whatever I want to work at. And so to me, I want to say kudos to the city, our staff for that effort, to all our community partners, and to the mayor's point that we have to reach out to all our private industry, industry to step up and support our youth, because they are the future workforce of our city.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, no-brainer to support it today. A lot of great testimony, really enjoyed hearing from you. Obviously, we know these great stories are happening, but it's wonderful to see your faces and actually hear you come and talk to us. That's just not replaceable. So thanks for taking your evening to do that, because I know how fun it is, you know, for you to sit in City Hall's chambers for a couple hours and, and hang out, but we're, I'm glad you're here. I do have just a couple of questions about the funding. Shannon or Chris, maybe one of you could help me out here. The numbers that the mayor has on the board there, and I don't need it turned towards me, Zach, I wrote them down, but the asterisks denote the new, the new numbers that we would be adding, because Summer at City Hall is already 100, and then the, the ETP and the City Match, those are the funds that the mayor did a great job of bringing in from the state, I get that. So what is the asterisk next to L&amp;L and next to Primetime Teen represent? Are those 229 new positions, or is that, are they totaled in?
229 represents the, the total annual number that we'll be able to put through L&amp;L. The additional is 25.
So, okay.
But over the course of the life of the trucks, that's what we're trying to emphasize. This is a one-time spend, but it buys us 10 trucks. The dilemma we're in right now is, we lease all the trucks for L&amp;L. That causes two problems. First off, obviously, the expense of the trucks is about $86,000 a year to lease the trucks. So we take that $86,000 that we no longer spend on leasing, we turn it back and we basically use it to hire additional staff, plus also putting 24 more kids out in the L&amp;L program.
Okay, so, so just to make sure I understand, 24 of the 229 are new?
25.
25, okay.
I'll, I'll clarify, 25 with, and then we have the additional four program leaders that are part-time. They're not, they're not considered youth, but they are kind of that next level.
So what I'm trying to figure out is this baseline number of about 200, does that include, like, for example, in the past few years, through District One specific money, I've added two L&amp;L crews in my district, so whatever that is, how many jobs is that, Shannon, in District One that we've added for youth?
At least...
With the CFD III money.
25.
Monica?
One crew per season, so three times a year, five kids, so it would be 15.
15? Okay, so we've done 15 a year with the CFD III money, specific to District One. Is that already included in here?
Yes.
Okay. So I just, I just wanted to understand how we're breaking that down and how we're, how we're helping make that happen with other city money that's specific to areas. And then on the Primetime Teen and YLT program, how many positions are added to that? Of this 200, how many exist? How many are new?
So those on the Primetime Teen and the Young Leaders of Tomorrow, 200 additional. So that's, we're adding that, that's additive to what we're already doing.
Great, so that's 200 new positions in total. Okay, my last kind of two points are, one is, I understand CMAS, and I don't want to go into that whole ridiculous thing, but is, are, do we, have we given other, have we given City of Sacramento car dealerships an opportunity to beat this price, or are we stuck with using that vendor?
I think you're going to need to ask city manager, that's outside our purview.
Okay.
We're fully, yeah.
Well, I just, I mean, if, if we need to do that, and it's a matter of timing and, and all of that, and I understand CMAS, I've done CMAS before in a different role, but if, I just want to make sure, you know, when we're spending that amount of money, that if we, if we could generate, if it could be here to support City of Sacramento businesses, I think that would be good. We do have a Ford dealer in the city limits.
Right. So Councilmember Ashby, we'll take a look at the CMAS contract and compare that to what our purchase has been through, like, downtown Ford, and make sure that it's the best deal for us.
Right, whatever's best, obviously, more important than where is best deal, but if we could get the same deal and spend the money in the city of Sacramento, seems like that would be smart. And then, just one sort of note. One thing I was reminded of when so many of you got up here and spoke, especially the outreach coordinator for Oak Park, was how much I miss out on by not having a community center in my district. What great individuals. And probably, nobody would notice this, but I actually got down and, and said hello to a person in the community center closest to my district, because they're so important to your neighborhood and all of these resources and, and all of you. I don't get to have the, the richness of those programs in my district absent the center. And I share a hotspot graciously. Councilmember Harris shares his community center and his school sites and things with me, and we try to send folks there. But it's not walkable, it's not bikeable for people in parts of my district. And I just wanted to tell my colleagues I'm anxious to get a community center to serve, to have these same types of program opportunities for the kids in that northern part of the city. And I also noticed that a lot of the people that are working at the Rio Tierra hotspot are coming from Del Paso Heights to work there, which is wonderful, and that is, but kids from my district can't, can't get there, and that is the hotspot for Natomas. So I just want to see it grow and expand, and this is a great night to, to add on to that. And then I just also want to encourage our city staff when we're looking at other opportunities, and we don't always have a community center in every area, to really partner with the libraries, because we can run some of these things out of libraries, and in that instance, we can reach some communities that, that don't have the same facilities. So, otherwise, great job tonight, young people advocating on behalf of your entire generation. You, you made them all look good. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Ashpan Adlis, Councilmember Shneur.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. I, I think everyone has said pretty much everything here, I just want to make a couple of quick points if I can. First of all, we have folks, and Sylvia was recognized, but we have folks like Kim Moller and Sylvia who have been at this for many, many years. If everyone who works for the department and is working with kids can stand so we can recognize them, that would be terrific. I, I just want to say thank you, and again, especially to people like him and Sylvia who have been through all of the cycles of building programs and then tearing them down and building them up again. I, I think that this is a great step in the right direction. I want to thank Chris and Shannon for putting all this together and thank the mayor for supporting it. You know, I know this is one-time money, but we need to find structurally ongoing and sustained dollars. We saw so many young people who came February 7th when we had this discussion, and then again tonight, and such a group of young, articulate, hard-working folks, these young people. This is absolutely the future of Sacramento. And, you know, on one hand, we wrestle with the diversity of our workforce in the city of Sacramento and our leaders in Sacramento, and on the other hand, that's you all, and that's you all in the future. And I think we're not only investing in the city, but we're investing in ourselves here in City Hall and who we will be as we move forward. So I, I, I think that's really important. I want to also just say that I absolutely am very excited about the programs that we have and the quality that we have. And when we think about L&amp;L, the pieces that are so important, it's not just about the money or just about the work, it's about teaching young people what the next step in their lives are going to be and giving them those soft skills so that they can be successful there. We really need to think hard about how we integrate that across all of our programs as, as we move forward. I want to put a small pitch in here, not for more money, but Summer at City Hall, which is now in its sixth year coming up, and has been very, very successful and is now being emulated in five other cities around California, we are the model program. One of the things the kids do at the end is their advocacy project. And we've done kind of a mock council every year for those kids to present to, and I want to suggest, Mr. Mayor, if you'll agree to it, that at the end of this year's Summer at City Hall, and those 100 kids do their projects by district, they present to this city council.
Hey, right on.
Rather than a mock city council, I think that's really important to do.
Let's agendize it.
We will. It will be at the end of July. So with that, again, I think this is a step in the right direction. I would actually add, Zach, to the chart, the Juma Ventures, those 60 young people that we have that are working at Golden One, and their desire to expand to a lot of the businesses that will be around Golden One. And thinking about the additional pieces of scholarships for those young people, there are things that we can do like that. So I'm very supportive of this. I think it's, again, a great step in the right direction. When you look at the unemployment rates of the youth in the city, they're still astronomically high. We need to get after that. We need to build the structures that are long-lasting and sustainable so that we can do this every year, and it's not something that we have to come back to and add, but something that we have and that we're meeting the needs of all of our young people across the city of Sacramento, across all eight council districts. All of our kids are at risk, as we, as we know, some are more at risk than others, but as you could hear from the young people who talked about going from 13 and probably getting into a lot of trouble to 16 and being successful, that's our responsibility here, and we need to make that a priority, as you did in your campaign and as I hope this council continues to do. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Jay. Councilmember Carr.
I won't repeat what the other members have said, I agree with them wholeheartedly. I grew up with Parks and Rec. If it hadn't been for Parks and Rec, I don't know what would have happened to me. My summers were spent refereeing basketball games, football games, and the rest, and it gave me my first jobs. I would just like to reiterate to the other council members, however, that we all are on so many boards and commissions. I know at SMUD, we had an internship program for the summer, but the boards and commissions that we serve on, we have an opportunity to be a force multiplier here and get those boards and commissions, those organizations, to hire people in the summer too, to develop their own internship programs. So as we set through those other meetings, let's see if we can find a way to push that forward. As so many other things that we're doing here in the city, we need to get them repeated in all of these other organizations, the joint powers authorities that we belong to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Again, last word, we need employers. We have private, some public sector employers, our city leading, we need private sector employees and other public sector employers. Okay, great, great presentation, great testimony, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, the measure passes by a vote of eight to nothing. Not bad. Hey, thank you, everybody. Now, if we could, you're all welcome to stay, of course, those are leaving. It's actually a very, very important subject coming up to the youth and all members of our community. I'd like to ask up here Emily Halken, Ryan Lufbrow, Kathy Cresswell, Dion Dwyer, Kerry Thomas, and LaShel Dozier, please. And I, I don't know where we're going to make room here. We're going to have people sitting...
In the front row?
We can have two sitting, sitting there. So we'll wait just a second for everybody to kind of clear out here. What? 30 seconds, everyone can stretch here. Yes, please. Be wonderful. Okay, we're back in session. Before Emily presents, I'd like to make some opening comments. Tonight, we are presenting a workshop. We are not voting on anything tonight. I think this workshop may be one of the, as we look back, may be one of the important turning points in our city when it comes to homeless policy, at least, I hope so. For, we have raised a series of questions in the last several months around how we can continue to build a system of care that has the capacity and the resources to address the thousands of people who are on our street. I have taken the tack, if you will, that until we are able to demonstrate that we have an inventory of permanent housing in one form or another, that it is going to be difficult to marshal and gather the resources, the energy, and the will behind all of the other pieces of, of building a system of care, because ultimately, everything depends upon housing. So the city council on the 31st of January passed a motion, by an eight to nothing vote, asking our redevelopment agency, we're going to hear from our redevelopment executive director tonight, as well as a number of other leaders in, in this community on these issues in a few minutes, to redirect 1,600 units, 800 a year, 400 in total from the city's own public housing stock, and a total of, of 400 plus 1,200, 1,200, 600 a year, from the so-called Housing Choice Vouchers. The county, of course, took, when we met in a very constructive joint session... The county, of course, took, when we met in a very constructive joint session, they passed a motion that said, "Let's report back and have a discussion," and I think they intend to have a series of discussions culminating in their sets of decisions on the 28th of March. As the community and the buzz about this controversial proposal has proceeded since the 31st of January, the question I have heard asked more than any other is, if we were to gain these 1,600 housing units/vouchers, if we were, how would we provide the services to the people who need them? How would we put together the mental health services, the substance abuse services, the vocational rehab services, the transportation, all that is necessary to assure that people in housing, and most of it, by the way, would be private housing, that they, how do we assure that they would succeed, or at least maximize the chance that they would succeed? And it is a fair and reasonable question, because Housing First is not Housing Only. And if we got these vouchers and we put people from the streets into housing without any services, it would undoubtedly be a failure. So, tonight, we want to ask, and hopefully begin to answer, key questions. And here are the three questions. And then I'll turn it over to Emily. How are we going to go about fully implementing our January 31st resolution, number one? Number two, what will it take to permanently house 1,600 people, 1,600 people, over the course of two, or at the most, three years? And three, just as important, because what a, what a bittersweet outcome if we helped 1,600 people off the streets, only to then replace the 1,600, that was 1,600 new homeless people. What will it take to prevent 1,600 more people from becoming homeless? We intend to have a workshop tonight where we want to seek to answer those questions very specifically. And by the end of the presentation, to demonstrate, I hope, that if we have the will and the creativity that we in fact have the ability to put together tens of millions of dollars in services to match the housing vouchers. This is not oppositional to the county in any way, for in the end, the city should not and cannot go its own way. We need each other. Even if we have slightly different approaches, we need each other. Because in the end, the county is the health and human services provider, they have the probation department, they have the infrastructure. We're a city, we don't traditionally do this. But I think it's been very clear for at least me, and from the eight to nothing vote of the council on the 31st of January, that while we're going to work cooperatively with all of our partners, we're not going to sit and wait, and hope that the answers that others give are going to be satisfactory to us and solve the problem. So, that's my somewhat lengthy introduction, and I apologize, but I wanted to set the stage for why I think this workshop tonight is so important. I turn it over to Emily, and thank you for your unbelievable work, actually, doing, covering so many fronts on these sets of issues. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the council. I'm Emily Halken, your homeless coordinator. I think I can, the mayor did a good job of summarizing the intent and goal of the workshop. Just a little bit more, as we proceed through tonight's workshop, I'm going to try to describe each of these six components, the mayor's hit on them just a little bit now, and describe how each of these plays a really critical role in developing what we hope to be a coordinated housing crisis response system. And while much of the focus that we've had over the past few weeks, and specifically at the joint meeting on the 31st, was really focusing on the end box here in this graphic, we definitely understand that each of these pieces is critical to a successful, to the success of each of the other ones. And so, the mayor also introduced with me tonight are some of our key partners, sitting up front, and certainly available during the presentation afterwards. While I'll be doing the majority of the talking, each of them does play a key role, and they are all available to help expand and enhance my presentation, and to offer additional thoughts. We really hope this can be a conversational opportunity for all of us. So, really briefly, when we talk about homelessness, I think it's important to first understand who we're talking about, recognizing that a complete strategy must address sort of both ends of this crude diagram up here. So, at the very widest end of this spectrum, the upside-down triangle, is the 250,000 people living in Sacramento County, this is countywide, who live in poverty. This is about 17% of our entire countywide population. Many of these folks may at one time or another access, or try to access, some of the homeless services that we currently offer. Moving a step down, it's very difficult, very difficult to count who amongst those living in poverty will actually become homeless. While almost everybody living homeless today is also living in poverty, the inverse is not true, and many people in poverty will never fall into homelessness. What we do know, the little research we do know, is that about 10% of people who are living in poverty at some point in their life may fall into homelessness. That gets to your 25,000, who we've sort of categorized here as housed, but at risk of homelessness. Moving a step down below that, of these 25,000 potentially at-risk households, like I said, some will fall in and out of homelessness rather quickly, others may fall in and have multiple reoccurring episodes of homelessness, and others, of course, will become our chronically homeless populations. We just finished a new point-in-time count, that data is not ready yet, so this is still relying on the point-in-time data from 2015, where we estimated that approximately 5,000 people at any point in time during the whole year would be without permanent housing. This includes folks unsheltered, as well as those in shelters and transitional housing. And then the final, the bottom piece of the triangle here is, of course, our most vulnerable constituency, unsheltered folks. And again, going from our 2015 point-in-time, we counted 948 unsheltered people. Over the course of the year, we can approximately double that, and assume that about 2,000 people will be living unsheltered. So, if we accept that our homeless population is about 5,000 people a year, we also want to understand what resources we currently have available that are exclusively for this population. On the far left are the emergency shelter interventions, and on the far right are the permanent housing interventions. So, as you can see, in general, our community is appropriately balanced. We have a lot more capacity in housing than we do in shelter. But please do note that this is a count of beds, and not necessarily people served. So, for example, one emergency shelter bed could serve eight to 10 people over the course of a year, whereas conversely, one permanent supportive housing unit, because it's permanent, may not turn over for five or 10 years, depending on the person. And so, while this chart may not clearly show this, one of the strengths of our current homeless system is really the amount of housing that we do have dedicated exclusively to people experiencing homelessness. Additionally, these units do remain occupied pretty much at 100%. We do a really good job as a community of targeting and ensuring that turnover units are readily occupied again. However, as you all know, given the current rental market in Sacramento, any program that's not site-based, it's not a built property dedicated for folks, really struggles to find appropriate and affordable units for clients. And as we all recognize, as the mayor prefaced, housing alone is definitely not sufficient to address the needs of people experiencing homelessness. Supportive services are just as critical. And while there are services attached to some of our particular shelter and housing options, in general, people experiencing homelessness are in need of many of the same services that people in our community who are housed also need. Each of these systems, however, may have its own eligibility, its own access points, its own level of services, and it can be very confusing to understand each of these independent of each other. And what that's caused, at least in the homeless world, I believe, is we've seen a tendency to compensate for this confusion and lack of service integration by recreating specific programs tailored to the homeless population, rather than integrating into existing community-based services.
Just, Emily, really quickly, as you're walking through this, it would be great to have you say who is providing the services at this point.
Sure.
So, we're doing some things, Sacramento Steps Forward, Redevelopment Agency, County.
Sure, and I think in a minute, we're going to have a chart of the whole system, which I think might put some of that in play. But in the, in the service, and I'm sort of pulling out services alone, services that are particularly aligned with housing, I would say mostly fall in Sacramento Steps Forward's bucket. Health services fall in both the county and in the private health systems. Mental health and substance abuse are primarily domains of the county, and employment really are sort of scattered throughout a bunch of programs, as generally have it.
I'll ask, I'll save my question.
Okay, feel free.
At least most of the presentation, feel free to jump in if you got.
Yeah, feel free.
But let's see if we can get, and I don't want to move as quickly as possible through the preliminary, because I want to get to the real meat of the discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
So, here maybe is answering. So, this is a, while we do have a lot of important components that support people experiencing homelessness, and we do have great partners in Sacramento Steps Forward, the county and our providers, our system we currently have is overwhelmed and perhaps pushed beyond its capacity. So, I tried to put this together in a rough diagram of how the homeless system of care currently works, and there's a lot to look at here, so I'm going to try to break it apart for you. So, we have people in need, both those that are involved in the system and those that are not involved in the system, and they're all competing for access to the same resources, whether or not it's the most appropriate or the best resource for their particular situation. And they're all trying to access this in order to get in a single community queue, in hopes of getting to a limited number of housing resources. And because of this clash of supply and demand, there's a lot of waiting, there's a lot of back and forth, there's a lot of general confusion about how to get from start to end. And this is not intended to be a criticism of the system, we certainly have come a lot further than we were even two, or three, or four years ago, and we're ready to take it to the next step. So, here is my really confusing diagram of where we're trying to go. The important part here is that we're trying to retain the good work of our existing continuum of care, but add some important components to help unclog the system. That includes both a front door that diverts people away from homelessness, and additional funding and capacity at the back end to ease the burden on the single set of housing interventions. So, again, breaking it apart, first, the front end in our hopeful system is a much more controlled, with a common front door. This could be virtual or physical, that doesn't really matter, but the idea is that people who are in need have a place to go with supports to address their particular needs. Some might get referrals to existing community programs, some who are at imminent risk might get some more targeted diversion supports. With a strong, a strong front door that keeps people out of the homeless system of care who aren't homeless, only those who are literally homeless will end up entering the homeless system of care with some more warm referrals and bed reservation options. And as it happens now, those people will still be entered into our vulnerability, and entered into the community queue, but now we'll be adding a whole new layer of housing and supportive services resources through the Housing Choice Voucher and public housing programs, and potentially others, meaning that the existing programs that the continuum of care operates will have the burden relieved on them to be everything, the end-all and be-all. So, I want to pull each of the pieces out a little bit. Most homeless experts, and most of us, I think, agree, that we're not necessarily wanting to just add all of the capacity and all of our energies to the front, to emergency shelters, but really, we want to stay focused on creating appropriate housing and services to get people quickly out of homelessness into housing. And while I generally agree that focusing on housing is our primary goal here, we can't ignore that we have people dying on our streets every year while we continue to try to play the long game. So, to that end, I think we want to talk about creating some prevention, sorry, and diversion, resources. So, as we just talked about, it should never be the case that people who are not homeless enter homelessness in order to access services. So, in the ideal system, there's a front door where the most, most people who are precariously housed or at risk are diverted from the shelter system. They're provided supportive services, perhaps some rent and utility assistance and other supports, to keep them out and to keep them stably housed, while a much smaller number of folks, those who are literally homeless, enter the crisis system. And it's important to recognize that this is both existing shelters, but potentially also some increased capacity in shelters. We've been talking a lot about triage shelters, and so I just wanted to quickly remind you the characteristics of this intervention. While we have been focused primarily on creating new triage shelters, it's also just as important to support our existing shelters and our existing services to move towards this triage model. So, these are the sort of six components that I would say characterize a triage shelter. Most importantly, that access is through targeted outreach, this is not a walk-up intervention. They are no or low barrier 24/7, and you can serve folks with the three Ps, pets, possessions, and partners. And I know Ryan can talk a lot more about that, if you'd like to. And it's incredibly critical to build out the triage shelter capacity at the same time as you build out the housing services. Otherwise, we'll just create a new place for people to get clogged in the system, with no options to exit into permanent housing. So, integration and availability of services is also critical, that's one of the key components we've been struggling with. In creating targeted housing, the services should be expansive, flexible, and dynamic, and be able to change and be responsive to the community. We really want to embrace an approach that meets people where they are, and we recommend sort of three components, case management, income support, and housing support. This may be three different programs, it might be one program providing three different services. How it's structured isn't as important, what's important is that all of these concepts are integrated and working together.
And it's for people who are both homeless, and those who are not homeless but are at risk of becoming homeless?
Right. These same, the same array of services could be offered through the prevention side of the door, as well as through the homeless side of the door. And we've done a lot of talking about what case management is, it's kind of a nebulous idea, and talking with some of my colleagues here, they really pointed out to me that that could be a lot of things. It could be outreach, it could be working with the Veterans Administration, it could be medical outreach with street nurses. It really needs to be tailored to the needs of the person. And so, finally, where we want to go on housing, I do apologize for all the acronyms and the busyness of this, I'm going to try to break it apart a little bit. Diversity of housing is just as important as quantity of housing. Sacramento Steps Forward will continue to operate all of the continuum of care housing programs, those are the ones on the far left. And they will focus on improving access and outcomes in these units by tightening some of the implementation of the coordinated system they're running. So, they are currently operating Rapid Rehousing, PSH is Permanent Supportive Housing, and in partnership with SHRA, they administer the Shelter Plus Care Program. We also have some existing resources on the veterans' end. Again, here SS Sacramento Steps Forward is responsible for working to collaborate between the veterans' programs and their existing coordinate, continuum of care programs. VASH is the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Program, it's another voucher program in partnership with SHRA for homeless veterans. And SSVF is the Supportive Services for Veterans Families, it's a Rapid Rehousing Program, again, for veterans. But on the far right is the new stock that we've been talking about, and want to talk a bit more about tonight. Increasing access and efficiencies of our existing programs is important, but we aren't going to create significant numbers of new housing opportunities just by recycling people through these same units. So, this is why these two options, the Housing Authority and the Built and Rehab units, are critical to increasing our supply of available units for homeless populations. Certainly, creating new units, building or rehabbing units, either in partnership with the No Place Like Home, which is NPLH, or other construction financing models, is always necessary, but may not be able to address the urgency of the current need that we have. And this is why the current and recent focus has been primarily on using the Housing Authority So, I want to give a very brief overview of the programs administered by SHRA, as I think the complexity has led, or can lead, to some confusion, and I'll certainly ask LaShel to correct any of the numbers that I have put on here. So, SHRA serves as the Housing Authority for the Sacramento County and the City of Sacramento. As the Housing Authority of the county, they also provide resources for people in the other six incorporated cities. There are two distinct programs that the Housing Authority administers. First, SHRA owns and operates about 2,700 public housing units throughout the county. These are the built units, both in developments and then scattered sites. For the public housing, SHRA acts both as the owner and the landlords, and the landlord, residents pay 30% of their income towards rent. Of the 2,700 public housing units, 1,700 are in the control of the city housing authority, and approximately 144 of those turn over a year. That leaves the remaining 1,000 under the control of the county housing authority, and I think about 70 of those turn over a year. The other programs that SHRA runs are voucher programs. The biggest one, and the one we've been talking the most about, is the Housing Choice Voucher Program. They have about 12,000 vouchers countywide, these are vouchers formerly called Section 8, that support the rent for lower-income households. The household, again, pays 30% of their income towards rent, and the voucher pays the balance up to a HUD-determined fair market rent. Most of these vouchers are tenant-based, meaning that they're attached to the household, or to the person who holds that voucher. And that person then is responsible for finding a unit in the open market that both is ... And that person then is responsible for finding a unit in the open market that both is below the acceptable rent that HUD will allow you to pay and that the landlord will accept the voucher. Of those tenant-based vouchers, about 660 turn over annually, and those three gray boxes at the bottom, those equal the 800 or so turnover units that we're talking about. The Housing Authority is also allowed to project base up to 20% of their total voucher allocation. Project basing refers to attaching the voucher to a particular development to support the ongoing cash flow of the development and to ensure that the units remain affordable for the long term. SHRA currently has, I believe, about 5% of their vouchers project-based. SHRA also administers two separate voucher programs, which we talked about a little bit before, by one to make sure they're up here because they are counted in their inventory, the Shelter Plus Care vouchers, which is for homeless families with disabilities, and the VASH vouchers for homeless veteran families. So where we are going, another critical piece of the conversation surrounding the public housing assets has been around who these programs currently serve and how people currently access these units. As I just showed, there's approximately 660 tenant-based vouchers that turn over annually, and SHRA uses a preference system to select people from their waitlist, which I understand is approximately 70,000 people deep currently. But given the depth of the waitlist and the turnover rate, effectively, a person really has to have all of these preferences to actually move off of the waitlist. The current preferences in Sacramento County for the Housing Choice vouchers are, you must be a resident, you get points for being a resident or employed in Sacramento County, being a veteran, being disabled, or being rent-burdened. As we talked about the 31st, two of these preferences, we believe, may inadvertently disadvantage folks who are experiencing homelessness. First, the rent burden preference, which gives points to people who are paying more than 50% of their income towards rent. Homeless people generally can't get this because they do not pay a rent. And second, the residency points, as we understand, SHRA verifies this with a utility bill or some other proof of address, which can be very difficult for a person who's homeless. In contrast, the public housing units, where there's about 220 that turn over a year, are occupied essentially based on first-come, first-served, although the size of the unit also plays into who fills the next unit. There has been a lot of discussion around preferences and the implications of potentially changing these preferences, and while we certainly recognize that there will be some impacts to people who are currently on the waitlist, it is important to consider this in the context of how the waitlist has been managed over the past several years. Given the number of people who are on the waitlist may never actually successfully lease up, the impacts might actually not be as significant as they appear. I believe that working with a trusted community partner to develop a limited preference waitlist will ensure, first, that people who are on the 70,000-plus waitlist, who actually are homeless, will actually be able to move to the limited preference waitlist and move up quicker, and secondly, that people who are currently homeless in the community and in need of housing will be able to move off of the streets. So given the confusion on local preferences and what they mean, and especially the rent burden preference, I did some really non-scientific research into the use of these preferences in other housing authorities, and you can see, just in California, almost every large housing authority has a homeless preference, and while other communities do have rent burden preferences, they are almost always in conjunction with a balancing homeless preference. And so I really hope that as we move forward and work on our preferences, we can look to the experience of some of these communities to make sure that we do it in a really thoughtful So as the mayor reminded you, the city unanimously approved on January 31st a resolution that directed SHRA to immediately begin the process of reallocating all of the turnover in city-controlled public housing to homeless households, and we asked the county board of supervisors to direct SHRA to also begin the process to reallocate up to 600 Housing Choice vouchers as well as the turnover in county Housing Authority assets. We believe that taking these actions along with the creation of the necessary services can create some significant new housing opportunities for our most vulnerable populations. My recommendation would be that SHRA use the public housing turnover for literally homeless and precariously homeless families, especially those with children. First, these units tend to be larger and are often located in developments where services and supports for families can easily be provided. On the Housing Choice voucher side, the 600, there are three preferred uses. First is adding capacity in the project-based voucher pool to spur the development of new permanent supportive housing, including partnering with an upcoming No Place Like Home initiatives. Creating move-on vouchers to allow people who are currently in permanent supportive housing but no longer need or want the intensive services to move out, but retain the affordability of their housing situation, freeing up a space in an existing supportive unit for somebody who's currently on the street. And finally, the creation of the limited preference waitlist to target vulnerable high users of public systems who are homeless through a flexible housing program with wraparound services.
We are now getting to the two most important slides of the presentation.
It might be three.
All that was very important foundation, so that we understand what we're trying to discuss here tonight.
Right. So how do we get there? So throughout the discussion in the past weeks and months, everyone has agreed that access to public housing resources is predicated on the availability of services and that those services are not the sole responsibility of the Housing Authority. And we've done a little work to try to estimate the cost for services for the 800 annual units being requested. So I'm gonna try to walk you through this, and stop me if I lose you on my math. So for the 600 Housing Choice vouchers on the left-hand side, we estimate that some of those will be used to help existing people move on out of an permanent supportive housing unit that already exists today. For these people, we will not need to subsidize their services because they will be moving on outside of services, and the backfilled person will simply take on the already-funded services attached to that unit. We do expect that we will need to provide a small enhanced rent subsidy to entice a landlord to accept that voucher, and so we've included an estimation of those. The remaining vouchers, we believe, could be divided between two categories: folks who are directly coming from the streets and the shelters but already connected to some sort of social services. This could be mental health, this could be public health, this could be alcohol and drug services. Many of our folks are already a part of some sort of case management service system. In that case, we would only need to bear the additional costs of some housing supports and perhaps some income supports, as well as some enhanced rent subsidies. Sorry, that's the third column, I should have gone in order, that's the 200. Then the final category, the remaining residents, we might assume are completely disconnected from all services, so our program is going to need to be able to support the entirety of the spectrum of services they need: the case management, the housing, the income, and then again, some rent subsidies to entice landlords. For the 200 public housing units, there will be no rent subsidies, SHRA is the landlord, so we don't need to entice them to accept these clients, these are who they serve. And so we've simply divided up again between people who are connected to services and we can take advantage of those, and those who aren't and who we need to fill the whole gap. At the end of the day, if you follow the math down, we estimate that for the 800 units in year one, we'll need approximately $5.5 million of services and supports.
Including rent subsidies to induce, and I see Jim Lofgren here, to induce apartment owners and landlords to rent to people who are homeless who need services. We would pay in part for that.
Yes, and I know you can't read the note because it's in really light gray at the bottom, but essentially, we estimated, just for modeling purposes, that we would pay 15% above the fair market rent for a year, and perhaps also some front-end payments of rent deposits, et cetera.
So five and a half million first year?
First year.
Okay.
So moving on to year two, we're going to have a new 800 households enter in year two, and again, it'll cost about $5.5 million for that first year of the second 800 folks. But the original 800 people, the enhanced rent subsidy would likely be able to end because they will have been receiving for a year, a year's worth of income and housing support to help ensure that they can maintain the housing on their own without that enhanced subsidy. And we estimate that approximately 75% will still need some level of case management and services. So we didn't cut everybody off, we're thinking that we're going to slowly graduate people out of the intensity of service needs. So following these assumptions through, we get to about $14.5 million over two years to support the 1,600 new housing opportunities.
So you've just told us that when you add, I'm just going to try to summarize. The first cohort of 800 is 5.5 million. Those folks will need a second year of services, but maybe at a reduced rate.
Exactly.
And then you add another 5.5 million to begin the cohort, the second cohort, the second 800, and the total, just for the people who are currently homeless, we're not yet talking about prevention, just the people who are on the street, to get 1,600 people off the street is $14.5 million over two years.
Yes.
Okay. And that's using the commonly-held number of $7,800 per person for someone who needs the full panoply of services.
Right, and I think as some of my partners have pointed out, that's probably a pretty conservative number, because we should be able to access some of the existing community services. Many of the folks that we're working with should be eligible for healthcare services and other things out there in the community.
Like reimbursement?
Yes.
From Medi-Cal? Okay. So now you're going to move from that to prevention?
Yes.
Because we could get 1,600 people off the street, but it would be less of a victory if that, we just replaced them with a new 1,600 or more. So how are we going to keep people out of the homelessness front door?
So as we talked about earlier, we also want to stop the inflow of new people becoming homeless. So I described earlier some of the concepts behind prevention and diversion programs, and there's a lot of programs throughout the country that we can look at in designing a local program, but in general, most of these types of programs provide referrals to existing community programs, maybe some light-touch case management to help people sustain housing, maybe some landlord mediation or legal aid to try to help with landlord/tenant issues, and in some cases, they do provide limited financial support, perhaps to pay some arrears in rent or utilities, if there's a one-time expense, something that will help as a stopgap keep people in the housing they're in. And so if we assume an average of $2,000 per household, which is similar to some programs that I saw down in Southern California, of financial assistance plus some cost, obviously, for staffing and administering such a program, roughly estimating about $2 million a year to divert or prevent 800 households from becoming homeless.
A year.
A year. So where does the money come from?
Wait, let's add it all up first.
That's, okay. So the blue on the left is the funding needs, and if you add it all up, if my math's correct, it's $18.5 million over two years for both services for 1,600 households and prevention for another 1,600 households. And then in terms of funding opportunities, we believe there's a possibility of a four-way partnership that I've described here. Up to $5 million from the city, up to $5 million from the Sutter Health Getting to Zero campaign, and hopefully Carrie's still here.
Carrie is here.
Okay. A potential for an additional $5 million in community match spearheaded through our partnership with Sutter, and then up to $5 million from other partners. This could be the county, this could be the state, this could be our private Pay for Success program that we're looking into.
So can I interrupt you just for a sec? Because this outstanding presentation, you've gotten right to the heart of this, and it's, I think, time for me to make an announcement, if I might. And I make the announcement in part because even though this isn't, quote, "agendized for action," in a sense, I'm going to need the blessing of my colleagues to go forward with what I want to suggest here. There is a program called Whole Person Care. It is a federal waiver program by which the federal government will authorize counties, and in this instance, potentially, a city, they will match dollar-for-dollar, dollar-for-dollar, any dollars that a city or a county put up for homeless services. Counties throughout California have been applying for this, and again, we are working with our county, I think they are doing a great job in many respects. This is not us versus the county, it's just factual. The county has made an administrative determination that they're not going to apply for the Whole Person Care waiver. Every county, other than Sacramento County, with a population of over $1 million, is applying, excuse me, a million people or more, a little tired, is applying for the waiver. So the county made that decision, and we respect that. Today, I got a telephone call from a woman by the name of Sarah Brooks, who's the Deputy Director for Healthcare Delivery Services at HCD, at Healthcare Services, the Healthcare Division of the Department of Healthcare Services, essentially the Deputy Director in Governor Brown's administration in charge of the Whole Person Care program. And she invited us as a city, us as a city, to apply for this waiver. The reason I raised this tonight in such a public fashion, and I did call Phil and Donatoli and Patrick Kennedy today to tell them that I was going to speak and say this, is because the application is due March 1st. They have, no, the state's great, they've promised us that if we get in essentially the outlines of an application by March the 1st, that they will work with us to perfect the application and help us get the money. So here's the significance of this. If we are able to put together $15 to $20 million, and the waiver application is granted, again, we've been invited to do this by the state of California, we double that money. So Emily, take your chart here, and please redo it.
Okay.
Because, because your $20 million, if it's 20, and understand, it could be $40 million, or if it were $15 million, it could be $30 million. And you've just put forward for us a two-year budget for not only all the services necessary for the 1,600 vouchers, but $2 million a year for prevention to help people out of homelessness, and you've costed it at a total of $18.5 million. So can we come up with 18, can we come up with $9.75 million times two, which would get us to 18.5? We can come up with a lot more than 9.75. So the city council has not weighed in on this, and I'm not presupposing how we should spend any money, but the Budget and Audit Committee, two weeks ago, set aside $5 million for, quote, "housing." This is for council deliberation, I understand it, but we identified it here as a potential source, if we're serious about getting 2,000 people off the streets of our city over the course of the next two years, at least 1,600. I'd like Carrie Thomas to come on up here, because we're going out of order here. Talk about this $5 million, this $10 million, a lot of money here. If the city were to put $5 million of its one-time money up, Carrie, can you talk about the parameters of what you have talked about with me, please, and some of our other colleagues here?
Absolutely. So Sutter Health, we have a longstanding partnership in this community and have been working on direct provision of services to homeless individuals that are presenting in our emergency departments and have had great success. But our leadership realized that we could have a bigger impact. We launched a Getting to Zero campaign that really focuses on how do we bring the business voice and investment into reaching functional zero in Yolo, Placer, and Sacramento counties and the cities within. We have put up match dollars, and we have committed to focusing on fundraising within the business community and foundations to bring additional dollars forward. We think that it needs to be a public-private partnership, and we're very excited about the conversations that we've had. And so I am thrilled about the Whole Person Care announcement. I think it is a wonderful way to bring resources to those individuals who need it most, to help them have a successful life. And we are here to partner, so should the vouchers come and you need services, it's right in line with our Getting to Zero. So what was on the screen is what we are willing to commit. The community partnership, obviously, we would need help with bringing the business to the table, but we're committed to partner in order to do that. We think it's important, we want to have a seat at the table and be a good partner.
Thank you very much. I know you have a... Thank you very much. I know you have a sick child at home, so we really appreciate you coming here.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure. It's exciting. This is very powerful.
Thank you very much, Carrie. So, Emily, I want to make one other comment about this Whole Person Care pilot, which none of us here at the city are experts, nor do we hold ourselves out as service providers or healthcare providers. That's generally a county function, right? And so the question arises, well, what are you doing here? Were you getting into the services? No. If we are nothing more than a fiscal agent, a fiscal agent, to be able to draw in 15 to 20 million dollars and then partner back with the county, or partner back with WellSpace, or our other healthcare providers, we've got to get this money. I mean, we're not saying here, we're trying to step in the realm of doing something that we don't do, which is providing direct services, but we're being offered the opportunity because we're stepping out here and stepping up here to, at a minimum, be the fiscal agent. Now, maybe we will have some greater role, I don't know, all to be discussed. But the point here is that we have the service dollars to be able to support not only 1,600 vouchers, frankly, more vouchers, and make a largest dent anyone has ever made in trying to resolve this problem. Keep going.
I think, I think I've said enough, and I think that you've ended it quite nicely, and I think Carrie's is good. So I think with that, we do, as you mentioned-
Have other stakeholders here.
We have other folks here, if you'd like to hear from them, and I won't put them on the spot, or any questions that I can answer.
Okay, why don't we ask one at a time? Now Kathy Crystal, I know you are here in the role of Chair of the Sacramento Housing Alliance, because I know you wear hat, you wear many hats, as some of us do.
Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople, and I'm very happy to be here just to talk about this program and how important I think it is that you've really stepped into a leadership position to address this critical issue at this time. We, there really is an urgency to act. You know, we've all seen the growing population, and we have all suffered from the devastation of knowing that people are dying now on our streets. And so I really encourage you, and I'm so gratified to see the kind of action that this council is talking about taking. And so there is an urgency to act. People are dying, and so taking some bold steps are absolutely necessary to do that. And I want to encourage you that this is something, and I think Emily talked about, other housing authorities are doing it, and from as early as 2013, HUD has been encouraging housing authorities to use, to provide these preferences for people experiencing homelessness. They have published rules in 2013 articulating how that can happen. They have published best practices. They are talking about and providing a lot of information about reducing the barriers that prohibit people who experience homelessness from accessing these resources. And in fact, as recently as 2016, HUD established some incentives for using project-based multifamily housing to encourage those entities, those developments, to provide a preference for homeless by providing specific financial incentives to do so. So, not only is this the right thing to do now, given the urgency to act, it is also completely consistent with HUD's effort to really encourage referencing homeless people. You've talked about the need for services, and it looks like we've got opportunities to have real services there. And we have existing systems in place now with SECS Forward and with the good work that SHRA has done. But continuing collaboration will be important. And establishing clear quantified objectives, which is what you're trying to do, is really important to really setting the framework. If you don't have those objectives, it's too easy to allow the technical difficulties that this does entail to really minimize the amount of action you can take. So it really seems to me it's important for the council to set those quantified objectives as what you're trying to do, and then rely on the great technical staff that you have and leadership at SHRA and Sacramento Steps Forward to figure out how we make that happen. But it requires at first, setting up the goal for doing it, and that will help then drive the technical work to make it happen. And then finally, I would just say, as you quote, so correctly identified, none of this works without additional resources for funding the services, but I would also just remind you also, it doesn't work without additional resources that will actually fund the development of additional housing. So project basing is critical, but also looking to expand the trust fund so that we have more resources to do it would be helpful.
Yes, and remember, in two years, No Place Like Home kicks in, right? So remember, the vouchers are intended to be temporary, because we hopefully will then transition into a No Place Like Home and have a more robust housing policy at the city that allows us to do more. Okay, you want to get Ryan next? Sure.
Mayor, Mayor of the City Council, good evening. My name is Ryan Lufprer. I'm CEO for Sacramento Steps Forward. I want to start with saying thank you. You know, it's interesting as we look at the services that we provide through Sacramento Steps Forward, it's entirely, or not entirely, but the majority of it's dedicated to those dollars that come in from the HART Act through HUD. And there's a lot of rules and policy, and they are very good in the sense that they demand that we serve the hardest-to-reach, the most chronically homeless. But we know locally, there's much more work to be done. And so sometimes we feel stymied that we just can't get there from here, that you have to have the housing with the services. So what's being presented tonight is really encouraging. It's, I think we should stay on the broad strokes and not get too delved into the details, because that's for many of us to hash out. I want to support Emily's comments about creating diversion and prevention. I'm telling you, that's the best money invested right there, right at that front door. Really looking at the investment and what the front door looks like. We, right now in committee, have talked a lot about that. How do we incorporate 2-1-1? How do we incorporate built environment plus our outreach efforts? Also, the talk of outreach, keeping those numbers and caseloads low, so you really get good case management with individuals. And then, in this model, wrapping individuals in a host of services. I also like, and I don't know that it was really brought out, this attention to those that are frequent users of systems. So that's not one of the criteria that we use currently within HUD allocated dollars. So this is individuals that are using hospitals frequently, touching base with law enforcement and jails, plus are chronically homeless long-term. So to prioritize them in this, it's a unique population, and it keeps the numbers a bit smaller and more manageable. So as we use our coordinated entry system, that's already the backbone of our system, adding on these amenities and with the resources that sound to be at hand, I think that we could start making a dent in the work that we're trying to do. Our numbers are high right now. We need to be creative. We need to take this type of ingenuity and deliver the product that we've all sought for so long. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Why don't we get the others from, then we'll open it up for questions. Dion, then we'll ask LaShelle to come on.
Mayor, Council, Dion Dewire, Downtown Partnership. I do, very excited, want to echo the comments of my counterparts here. You know, you started tonight, Mayor, talking about the city does not traditionally do this, and we're not going to wait. And that's something that Partnership started talking about in 2006 when we launched our Navigator program. And so it's important that we've been navigating people to housing, have this housing-first concept for quite some time. And one of the reasons we started to do that was because we saw the impact on our streets. I want to bring the high down a little bit, but I can tell you, in the first six weeks of this year, we've lost four individuals that we've been working with within the downtown core.
What does that mean?
They passed on. Yes, sir. So, you know, when you look at, I'll do Bob's work today, but when you look at the homeless death report, if you have not read it, Bob Irwin-Bush, great group, with some advocates that are probably sitting in the room behind me and our Coroner's office in county, we looked at the impacts of leaving people on the streets and doing nothing, and it's quite high. So when you look at the, whether it's 9 million, 20 million, the impact of really losing dignity and adding death to this equation, you start to get a little more real. And I would like to talk a little bit about the frequent users that Ryan talked about. You know, we talked in whole numbers around 800 individuals, but when you pull 200 of those individuals out, and you start looking at the cost of those individuals, not just to the individuals themselves, where they're going to lose 25 years off their lifespan. We know that three out of four homeless people die in unnatural death. So you start looking at those impacts, but then what's the service cost of those frequent users? I sat in Councilmember Harris's office, and he looked at a city report and showed me the impacts of frequent users on just normal city services and services of business groups like myself. And I can tell you, those 200 individuals that Emily called out for additional services would cost the city about $8 million annually, based upon just frequent users' cost of having people in the system.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement, hospital rides, business impacts, P-bids like myself that pay to mitigate some of those impacts. So, we're excited to be part of the process. We definitely want to be a part of the solution. And before I sit down, I want to talk about our partners, which is definitely Sutter's been supporting our organization for many, many years in helping us navigate people to housing, so I want to give them credit. I saw John Foley with Sacramento Self-Help Housing, which is where we house a lot of our individuals, so I wanted to call out his group for doing amazing work. And then, of course, we work closely with Ryan at Steps Forward. So I just want to call out our partners and say thank you for allowing us to be a part of this.
You were here tonight. Thank you so much, Dion. Let's ask our SHRA Executive Director, LaShelle Dozier. Come on up. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Ladies and members of the council, LaShelle Dozier, the Executive Director for Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency. First of all, I think it's really important to note that everyone does agree that services are the key, and that in order to really deal with the population that we've been talking about, we really do have to come up with very creative. And what's been presented here is a very creative solution that really starts to address the problems of making this a successful plan. So I was asked to come here and really talk about the work that we've been doing thus far to move forward this whole idea of how we can get to using vouchers for homeless individuals. So first of all, I just really want to talk about the public comment process that we've been involved in, also the stakeholder engagement plan and outreach, and then kind of the project timeline. So we've really been working extremely hard to move very quickly in terms of putting forward the general notice. We actually made sure that immediately following the meeting on January 31st, that we provided a notice that started this kind of clock that needs to occur on February 3rd. We utilized all of our media outlets to inform community stakeholders, the general public, about impending community meetings and public hearing. This general notice, which aligned with the March 21st Board of Supervisors meeting, so we wanted to make sure that all of this work happened in time for the March 21st meeting. This general notice allows the public to learn about the considerations that we are discussing and to give them information. It's an opportunity for us to solicit feedback and to really get the comments from all of those individuals who will be impacted and affected by any changes that we make. All of our notes that we will put together and compile will help with the governing boards in the final decision. Also, once we go through that particular process, and there is a definitive action that is given, the governing boards, a public comment period commences. This is where we actually tell people, this is what we're going to do. So we're in the process now of saying, these are some of the things that we're considering, then a decision is made, and then we have to tell people, this is what we're doing.
I'm sorry, if I may, just to clarify, who makes that, when you call, I forget the adjective used, final decision, or?
For the public housing units, the city, so you acting as the city housing authority, have control over all of the public housing units within the city jurisdiction.
Right, for the housing choice vouchers?
The housing choice vouchers are under the jurisdiction of the County Board of Supervisors, and so they make that decision.
And you will make a recommendation as to how many the County Board of Supervisors ought to allocate for the program that we've outlined here tonight?
Based on feedback and comments, absolutely.
You'll make a recommendation, okay.
That is the expectation.
Okay, and when do you anticipate you'll make that recommendation?
It is, it is for the March 21st meeting, which is the end of the public comment period.
For March 21st, okay.
So, just to follow up, in terms of the work that's been going on, we have been really working very aggressively, like I said, with stakeholder outreach and engagement. In addition to that, we've used all of our traditional media sources, newspaper, radio, metro cable. We made culturally-specific media outcasts to people who have limited English proficiency. We also have a digital strategy, so information can be accessed online, including partners with 2-1-1. We also have put up a website, the SHRA website, which is a transparency, so that people can go there and get all kinds of information. We're also using social media as a way to outreach. In addition, we've outreach to HUD and are collaborating with them, because we want to make sure that we are doing things that will be approved later on down the line. So we have met with the Department of Housing and Urban Development relating to some of the proposals that are on the table to ensure that there is no unintended impact to any protected class. And those protected classes are classes such as gender, people who may be disabled, or any of the other classes. In addition, we have also meeting with the city stakeholders. So these are the incorporated municipalities within the county. So we've met with some of the city managers, and then we are also following up and having meetings with their actual council in terms of presentation, so that we can gain feedback. So those are seven different cities that we are engaged with. In terms of our community stakeholders, there are community workshops for public comment, and so we are working with developers, property management companies, neighborhood associations, and landlords as well. So I have a list here of all of those different workshops that we are engaged in. It's a little bit hard to see, but it just really kind of gives you an, oh, there we go. So, it gives you an opportunity to see the magnitude of all of the work that needs to happen to make sure that we are engaging the community in the decision-making process. We're making sure that they are residents who will be impacted, especially when it comes to public housing, have an opportunity to comment. We have meetings that are in the north, meetings that are in the south, and also meetings at our Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. So, a lot of work and a lot of meetings to make sure that we're on track.
Couple of questions, if I may? Or you, please finish, I'm sorry, I thought you-
Okay. So then I was going to go into the project timeline.
Go ahead.
So in terms of the project timeline, this kind of puts together all of the steps that are necessary to make the types of changes that are required. So, as I mentioned, we'll be going before the County Board of Supervisors on March 21st. We also are scheduled to come back here to the City Council to talk about the purview of the units under the council's control. Once a decision is made about that, then we will start the formal process of making changes to our administrative plans. So that goes on from April till May, and then in June, by the time we have our final approvals, then there's a series of steps where we go before the final governing bodies. We make sure that we revise all the changes, and then we submit all of those to HUD for their review. So, as I said, we're working in concert with them very closely to make sure that there are no unintended consequences that later on could have some type of impact that we want to make sure we think through at the front end of this process. So there was also some additional information that was requested, and I think Emily has covered some of that, but in terms of the public housing, there's nearly two-thirds, as she pointed out, of public housing is in the city, and then one-third is in the county, and two-thirds is in the city. And approximately 200 units turn over in public housing. But just to be a little bit more specific, of those 200 that we've been talking about, 162 of the 200 units are in the city of Sacramento.
How many, I'm sorry?
162 are within the city. And then Emily pointed out also, too, about the number of vouchers that we have, and the majority of those vouchers, two-thirds of the vouchers, are located within the city of Sacramento.
Two-thirds of the HCVs are within the city.
Right. And what we have noticed is that this is our point in time. If we kind of took a snapshot of where we are today, we have two-thirds, but it varies. Sometimes it's been 50%, because the vouchers do allow people the opportunity to move, and at any given time, there are at least 400 to 500 families who may be in that process of moving. But I wanted to make sure that I provided the information in terms of where we are as of today. We do find that our voucher families tend to concentrate in areas where they have personal support within their community, transportation, family, medical, maybe faith-based community. And then we also see of the 675 that are the project base that Emily mentioned, those are predominantly located within the city, because most of the project basing that we have done has been in the city, and the largest number of those are at Phoenix Park. So, just want to make sure that I pointed out that data.
Councilperson Schneider has a clarifying question.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, LaShelle. Could you just back up just for a second and talk a little bit more about the audience that you're trying- that you're trying to get for these meetings? Because it seems to me most of those folks are currently in public housing or with vouchers?
No. If they're in public housing, then they don't have vouchers.
No, I said "or" have vouchers. They're one or the other. If that's the audience, there's obviously a self-interest not to change the system.
Not necessarily. Because there are people who are in public housing who were similarly situated, people who were homeless themselves and have a level of empathy for other individuals who need to get into housing.
I would just have that concern about how we're doing that piece.
Yeah. But that is one thing that HUD requires us to do, is to reach out to the current...
No, I just, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I think it's right, and I think all of the outreach that we're doing is, I understand it's mandated, and I think it's very important. I just think we have to be thoughtful when we look at the responses and where we're getting them from, and how that impacts the individuals who are responding, and the audience that the mayor and others are trying to reach with us, which is a different audience.
Well, including this city council, but that's... Few questions. Are you...
Yes, I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Emily mentioned in her presentation that there are an unspecified number of homeless people on these waiting lists, right? And the concern is that, are we helping the homeless while jeopardizing people on the current waiting list? Do you know how many people, how many homeless people are on the current waiting lists of 70,000?
In terms of the, we started keeping the data maybe a couple of years ago, I believe. It was about two years or so. But we know, based on our experience, that we tend to see sometimes maybe up to 30% of the people who end up finally getting pulled are individuals who are homeless. And when we say homeless, there's people who are literally homeless, and then there's people who are experiencing bouts of homelessness, in terms of...
And those third, however you define them, they're not necessarily at the top of the existing waiting list, correct?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. So in reconfiguring the list, it would be possible to take those people who are homeless on the waiting list but lower down and put them higher up?
Yes.
Okay. Second question. You, I know, have said, and I think appropriately so, that the housing vouchers for the homeless only work if they're connected with real services. Do you agree that, with the conclusion, I understand that it's an estimate, that if we were able to put forward $18.5 million worth of services, including a couple million on the prevention side, that that would be a robust amount of money to support the 1,600 vouchers that the city council is asking for?
I think that having a robust amount of money for services is the exact direction that you have to go to make this type of plan successful. And that is, that's a lot of money.
A lot of money, and it's frankly, I think it's conservative, actually, because when Emily prepared the PowerPoint presentation here, we hadn't gotten the call from the state of California on the whole person care waiver. So, last question, and maybe this is the toughest question, but we got to get to the core of this, I want to ask. So, I understand that under the current city-county MOU, or whatever it is dating back decades ago, that the county currently has authority over the housing choice vouchers, even though two-thirds of them, as you describe, at least currently, are estimated to be within the city. So this is the tough question for you, but what do you do? How do you follow the city's direction as put forward in a formal resolution on the 31st of January to seek to redirect 1,600 units? If it is in conflict with what the county might choose to do on the 21st of March, and of course, you have a recommendation before that, and so do you make a recommendation that is consistent with the city's clear direction? We're one-half of your appointing authority. The county's resolution, of course, was a lot more ambiguous. They didn't say, "No, 500, or 900, or 1,000." They just said, "We want to look at this more." So we're the only body that's made a specific direction, and you have to make a recommendation. And how do you, how are you going to do this? Because this is, because this is important. I'm sorry, this is, and I've been clear, I look forward to working with you and with SHRA and being a full partner on this, because you have the expertise, you know? You understand housing finance, you understand project-based vouchers, you know this stuff. But we have made, we have made a very specific ask. And so how do you balance and reconcile this question that is before us? Especially now that we have indicated a willingness to put forward a minimum of, you know, 15 to 20 to 25 million dollars worth of services?
Well, I think that our charge has been and is a part of this process as we, you know, because we, this is not the first time we made a change in terms of how we look at preferences. So that has happened before. And I think our charge is to make sure that our process is followed. And so that is what we're doing, is making sure that that particular process is followed. And a part of that process is to gain input and to get feedback that helps inform the decision. So obviously, as you have brought this amount of resources to the table, then that helps inform the eventual recommendation that's going to be made. There's a lot to be said when you're talking about $18.5 million for services. So I think the answer to that question, while a difficult one, is that this is just as important as it is in all of the other outreach activities to make a final decision, or a final recommendation of which...
I will take that as a great answer on February 22nd. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's, I appreciate the answer. Let's, thank you. Now, I want to open it up not only to the executive director, but to Emily and the other panelists, or for council comments here, and then we will take public testimony. We're going to do this a little bit in reverse. So let's go with Councilmember Schneer.
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, just one, I wanted to do a little bit of history, because I think it's important. I've been here now for six years, and this is the most excited I've been and the closest we've gotten to actualizing the dreams that we all have about what the city looks like around homelessness. So I want to go back a little bit, and, you know, I think Mr. Hanson and I were pushing early on to put more dollars into homelessness and to create the liaison position that Emily has so adequately and eloquently filled. And when we did that, we were, I think both, and Mr. Anthony can correct me, but we were both very much in the camp of, we don't want to provide services, but what we want to do is fund services through Sacramento Steps Forward, but have someone who could help us do all that. And we didn't think that it was appropriate at the time for the city to be recreating the wheel, to be a provider of services in homelessness. So it was the county's responsibility in Sacramento Steps Forward, and that's why Sacramento Steps Forward was created. And so what the city did over time was, one, create the position, which I think has been incredibly important, and I want to make sure, as we finish this meeting tonight, that you have the resources you need to take advantage of what this is. So I'm going to make a request to the city manager that if we need to reassign staff or do whatever we need to do to, number one, give you a life back, but number two, do what we need to do for this March 1st deadline and going forward. I think this council has really shown its priorities, and one of its priorities being meeting this challenge. So we put in, so we created the position, we put in, I think, a million dollars the first year, another million dollars the second year, through SAC Steps Forward, to do a lot of the work. The next step that the council did was we created, and this was Mayor Johnson to his credit, we created a task force on homelessness, and we spent many, many hours with members of the county, redevelopment agency, community-based organizations, providers, putting together a set of recommendations that were 21 recommendations, many of which we were following through on, but many of which we just don't have the resources to follow through on. I think they were all good, and they were all important to getting to the outcomes that we want. But we were able, really, to move the ball slowly forward at that. With the new mayor and with the weather this year, and the amount of water pushing people off the rivers, and what we saw as a result of that in the cities, the council has moved, and again, led by the mayor, to create more shelter beds. So moving from really what was a one-track on housing first to, we need to do more things immediately, and rightly so, and probably we should have done that earlier, but we did. It took a little time to do that. So where we are today is, I think, and this is where we started and where Steve and I started, around not being a provider. I think we need to reassess that. And not that I want to have the city compete with the county, or recreate programs that the county or Sacramento Steps Forward is doing, but I think we need to move along a timeline that we set for ourselves, so that we can address this problem as expeditiously as possible from this point forward. We have an incredible opportunity, and I think Carrie left, but Sutter is not only providing dollars, but they've provided leadership. And I've now been to two regional meetings that they held. The first, I think, were 31 electives from around the region, the second with 22 or so more recently, talking about their strategies and their desire to help. And I think that's been a real catalyst for us, and probably this 5 to 10 to 15 to 20 million that we could raise, I can't imagine happening without them. Our 5 million, yes, potentially, but without Sutter's leadership, and I think we need to give them credit for that. As a leader in the region, because this is not a Sacramento city problem, it's not a Sacramento county problem, it is a regional problem. I would say that while the funding, the bulk of federal and state funding runs through the county or SAC Steps Forward, we probably are impacted most. So there's this imbalance between how the funding flows and where the challenges lie. And most of them go right to Steve's district, which is the heart of the city here. We know that. So, we need, I think, need to recognize that, but I stand ready for my vote as we move forward on this, that we absolutely move forward on this potential, or on this opportunity that the state has provided. I think it's exciting that we provide whatever resources we need to get that done. I still don't think we should become a provider. I think that there are great community-based organizations and providers in this community that we should work with and contract out for, or contract with to do this work. They are the experts in this. We certainly are not, and I don't see us adding personnel to do that. But I think that we need to step up and be the leader as we can. Now, there's lots of other ideas that, if we have money, the Triage Center, which was one of the 21 recommendations, and something that County Supervisor Cerna has pushed, is really important to do. And if we, and the reason we didn't move forward on it is because we didn't have the units. So moving people through a Triage Center with nothing on the other end was worse than not doing it at all. And so I think now is the time to revisit that and hopefully being able to partner with the center. The only point that I want to make is, I understand the urgency of this, I understand $18.5 million over two years. I think we can absolutely put those... Yeah, we can absolutely put those funds together. I'm excited about that. I hope that, at the same time, and this is one more layer that we have to work on, is what's the sustainability of this? And this is where we have to stand side by side with the county over time, with the housing authority, with our community-based organizations, certainly with our business community. And I think, and I've said this at our last meeting that we talked about, with the P-bids around, and I'm looking at Dion, and I'm hoping that you can convene, I'm looking at where can we find more dollars? That if we can match two to one, how much are the P-bids around the city now spending on homeless issues? And we know it's considerable. So there's a little bit of risk and reward here, but I'm hoping that, being the largest P-bid in the area, that you could convene your colleagues and say, "Can we put some money together from the P-bids for this two-to-one match?" And that we do that very quickly. Because I think...
Great idea.
Yeah. I think you spend more money probably than anyone but the city and the county on these issues. So I'm very, very supportive of what we're doing here today, whatever direction we need. My two things are, again, that we think about the sustainability of this work, that we do everything possible to work with the county, with the housing authority, and I know that you're doing that, Mr. Mayor.
We need the county, we need each other. This is, I mean, if we're the fiscal agent for the whole person care and we work with the county, whatever it is, we need each other. And by the way, whole person, you talk about sustainability, Jay, you're absolutely right. Whole person care is ongoing funding.
Right.
That's a steady stream of funding.
And my hope, I guess, two other things. One, as I said, I want to put in a request to the city manager, to our permanent city manager here, that we support you with what you need to get this done. And this is not going to ease up after March 1st, and so I think we need to put some more resources there if we can. And that, the other piece is, and I'm hoping we can bring this back to the council relatively soon, the Pay for Success model that we're doing the feasibility study on, that is a potential realm of sustainability that we need. I don't know when we're getting back results.
Separate agenda item on Pay for Success at this council, please. Separate agenda item.
This is a really quick update on Pay for Success. Our consultant is underway. They had a little bit of a time delay, but they are putting together data. I expect them to be reaching out to each of you guys early in March with some initial findings, but then we can calendar it for the entire.
I think that's great, and I think if we look at the state opportunity and Pay for Success and meld those two together where we can have an ongoing source of matching dollars, that behooves everyone, and that's a piece of the sustainability. So with that, Emily, I thought it was a great presentation. I know you have been working so hard on all of this. It's very much appreciated. It's a critical issue for us, and for everybody here, we all need to stand side by side. This is not our issue. This is a regional issue that we need to work together on. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hanson, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, you know, I agree with much of what Councilmember Schneer said. When we started down this path in 2014, it was because the city didn't have a comprehensive way in which we tried to help people who were homeless, and it was a very fragmented system. But even to step back to the, what I call the rise of Sacramento Steps Forward, it coincided with a decision at the county level, and they do say, "The best fights you have are between friends." And I think this is for the right reasons. We're having a robust debate, and I do think that we need each other. But it came with a decision at the county where they were going to give up federal funds, $18 million a year, and that just wasn't acceptable to the community. And I think that Sacramento Steps Forward has filled the gap. Whether it can fully fill the gap that was left, it's clear that we still need government to play a role. And Councilmember Cohen, who preceded Mr. Harris, Mr. Schneer and I, we wanted to fix our fragmented services at the city. We also wanted to add value to Sacramento Steps Forward. So we had this idea to create someone who could be our coordinator, and that became Emily. From the seeds of that, I think we've been very successful.
Good decision.
And the county has adopted that model. But also, we wanted to fund something called Common Sense, which was our effort to help plug some of the gaps in the continuum of care, which were, you know, which I think fulfilled this idea that we're complementing, not duplicating. And we, as a city, we're like mechanics over here. We don't do healthcare, we don't do mental health, we don't have people that have those competencies in our staff. So we're asking a staff that's really planners, park people, police, and fire, to figure out how to think about social services, mental health. We do have a housing authority, but as you've heard, that the relationship, as Facebook might say, is complicated, because it is a joint agency with the county. And the county housing authority or city housing authority, who has vouchers, all that stuff, it's unfortunately become this thing where we have not yet figured out how to, through partnership... to, through partnership, accomplish the needs of our citizens. And, you know, I've sat here for a little over four years, and some of my colleagues longer, listening to the demands of advocates on behalf of the homeless. And we've tried to do our part, but we cannot do it alone. Sacramento as a city is not an island. We are one city in the county, we are one county in a region of six counties. And the truth is, though, that all of these problems become concentrated in the central city, which is District Three and Four, and in other parts of the city as well, and we have not yet figured out how to share that burden in a way that's both responsible, fair, and even more important than either of those things, actually helps our people effectively, efficiently, and using Housing First. The housing crisis in our region is not unique to our region, just like our homelessness challenges aren't unique to us, but we have not yet figured out how to rise to the occasion on our housing crisis or our homelessness crisis. Now, I think actually the housing crisis, we have more of a role in helping to fix as a city by entitling housing, by doing everything we can to encourage housing development, because more housing helps everybody. The challenge I see, though, is that we leave money on the table because we don't perform these functions. And, you know, I'm elated to hear about the whole person care issue, that's real money. Again, we don't have a social service department, public health department, we don't do those things. So we're going to have to figure out how that's going to function. But just today, there was an application due for Prop 47. We approached the county in December, they refused to joint partner with us on that application. We wanted to use that grant, which is up to six million for thirty-eight months, so about two million dollars a year, to do services, to complement our vouchers, and we were told no. We would not, we were not worthy of being partners with. And that, I hate to say, between friends is a really hard thing to hear, when we're trying to help people who are on the streets, we're trying to help people in need, and it's not the right answer. I would also say that this issue related to the lists, LaShelle, I think your agency does really good work. I think we need to make sure our lists are duplicated, that we're managing well, that people who are housed come off the list. And I would ask you and your staff whether there's an IT solution to it, whether there's some smart way to better manage those lists, because it's very, it's very nineteenth century, I think, or maybe twentieth century, how we're dealing with that, that challenge. And I think we probably have some twenty-first century ways of managing the lists. But I think in the end, we have to house people. And the exclusion of homeless people from our housing lists, I think, was discrimination. And I think that the idea that adding them in would displace other people does not change the fact that excluding them in the first place was wrong. And I think, especially when we're talking about a Housing First strategy, when we have a housing authority that's part of our city, and we are not using that housing authority to house people who are on the streets, there's a moral question in there about whether or not we're fulfilling the duties that we swore when we gave our oath. And each of us as public servants, I think, feel that moral imperative. That doesn't mean that we need to use moral approbation or shame or other things, we just need to fix it, and fix it going forward so we stop the injustice.
Thank you.
I'm not done, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I am riled up here. We also, when we lost redevelopment, we lost our source of affordable housing funds. And when the Budget and Audit Committee set aside five million dollars for housing, I mistakenly, because I'm not on the committee, assumed that that would mean we're putting money into helping build units. Because we, if we're not growing the pie, then that actually is displacing. Just think, you have the same number of chairs, you're trying to squeeze more people in, we're going to be displacing people. And one of the things I think we can do that's certainly within our role and our purview is building housing. And we need to do everything we can. I had a housing town hall last week, Mr. Mayor, we had about seventy people there, and I heard over and over again that we need to build, baby, build. There is not enough housing for our population growth, there's not enough housing that's affordable, there's not enough housing that's permanent supportive, there's not enough housing that's achievable for people to buy who want to move up the ladder for themselves and their families. And that crisis, much like the healthcare crisis, needs to precipitate some kind of Housing Affordability Act, if you look at the Affordable Care Act. There are ways to make these systems work. It doesn't mean it's going to be easy, it doesn't mean it's going to be cheap, but it will take some discipline. And here, I am so grateful to Sutter for helping to lead the community and pulling private resources together, and to you, Mr. Mayor, bringing state resources. But the city can also apply for Prop 47. We chose not to out of partnership. But I think if there's some way we can get in an application, and the state will let us, it was due today, but the application that I understand went in did not cover housing. And when I read their chart here, priority projects, priorities for the grants will be given to those projects that provide housing-related support, up to two million dollars a year for three years. That's significant money being left on the table. And my last comment is, if we can't make progress, the county receives about eighty million dollars a year from our city property taxpayers. That means from within the boundaries of the city of Sacramento, they get about eighty million dollars a year to serve our citizens that are city residents. And if we're not getting a value on that return, we really have to figure out what we're going to do. I also think that may mean we have to reassess the nineteen-fifties MOU that turned over our health department to the county. We have to look at our joint partnerships and see whether or not we need to take more control of our destiny to serve our people. Because I can't stand another meeting with people showing up that say people are being killed on the streets, that their stuff is being taken, because we feel helpless and we don't have the will to challenge that system. We need to stand up and have the will to challenge that system.
Well, you know, tonight is, there's no vote tonight, but the discussion is intended to take us down a very significant step to working with the county, but making sure that we are doing everything we can to solve this major problem within our city. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, homelessness is a big and intractable problem with many, many facets. It's been frustrating for me as a council member to run up against a couple of brick walls in terms of rolling the ball faster. It's been frustrating for my constituents who deal with the impacts of homelessness. It's been frustrating for the homeless because we're not offering sheltering opportunities and housing opportunities at a rate that feels quick enough to really make a dent in the problem. So, you know, there's all these aspects to it, but of course, you know, homelessness isn't new in the last couple of years. It's been around for the forty years that I've lived in the neighborhood. So, you know, we can't expect to deal with it instantly. That being said, we're in a place now that we have never been before in terms of addressing the issue of homelessness. So I really want to thank Emily. I mean, you've been an incredible ally, right from the get-go since I got elected, and Ryan also, for starting the conversation. You know, this, to get on top of this problem requires a lot of leadership, and this gentleman over here with the red tie on is really showing some leadership. Mayor, I got to tell you, your drive is moving the ball forward. And when the Budget and Audit Committee, when you said that you wanted to allocate five million dollars for homeless, I choked a little bit, because, you know, I'm not a big fan of committing one-time monies. I'm a saver. But the way you've come up with the whole person care idea is incredibly exciting and shows tremendous leadership. If we can take that money and double it, of course we'd allocate it to this. And that, along with the leadership of Sutter, has opened a conversation that we haven't been able to have, which is, let's get moving on this and no more waiting on decisions from the county or by the county. I think you're absolutely right. The time is now, the opportunities are right here, and the funding is a big piece of, big piece of it. These matching funds can make a lot of things a slam dunk. You know, frankly, we can move into triage, we could express opportunities like micropads and get more units online quickly. It opens a tremendous pathway to move this problem forward. I find this very exciting, and everything that Councilmember Shneer said is right on the mark, in terms of sustainability, using the whole person care funds in conjunction with social impact investing, which I think can be incredibly robust. We just have to get started, you know? We've been talking about this for a long time, for many years, and my predecessor and the people who have been here longer on the council than me have been setting the stage. But you know what, now the stage is set. I think that we're poised to make real, real change. And I've said a couple of times at council that I think 2017 is the year that we make substantial change, and now you've given me even much more hope, Mr. Mayor. So I really appreciate your energy and what you've done. In terms of opening, I'm almost there. In terms of opening the conversation, we had the homeless two-by-two with the county. And I would have to say that in opening that conversation with supervisors, we did cover some ground, you know? We actually made things happen. We wouldn't have had any of these metrics that we have now, the entire report by Emily, if we hadn't gone through that two-by-two exercise with the county and pulled together all these facts and figures. The cost of homelessness report a year and a half ago was a way of starting the conversation. So I appreciate those efforts, but you know what, if we have to act on our own to move this conversation forward, now's the time to do it, and I'm all behind it, and I, once again, thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, I appreciate it. You know, I just state sort of the obvious, we don't have the whole person care money yet, but we have been invited specifically to apply, and that is very hopeful and a very good sign. And I, it bears saying, and I know you all are saying it in different ways, it's so easy, I, one, appreciate the county, I recognize that the county has very difficult and challenging set of priorities, that they run the whole health and human services infrastructure, that they've dealt with terrible budget deficits. And so however this is perceived, I want to just stay and mean it and say it and mean it, that we need them and they need us, because there's no way in the end we're doing all this by ourselves. Where we go on our own to light a spark, we'll go on our own. But ultimately, it's got to be in partnership. The way our systems of government are set up, it's the way that it is. And so, you know, sometimes there are tensions and elbows and, you know, who's doing what and who's in charge and all that, we're all, all, all trying to solve the problem. And, you know, I have a few years of experience there at the old State of California, and it provides maybe me in this role to help lead here. If I were a county supervisor, I could do it from that vantage point, it doesn't matter. We're all, we're all under the same umbrella hair, and we need to constantly reinforce the importance of working together.
So, Mr. Mayor, one quick comment. You talked about lighting a spark. Well, you know, that's what it takes, you know, that kind of lightning rod to start the conversation that brings all of our allies to the table.
That's right.
It's not just the county of Sacramento, it's the five surrounding counties and all the outlying cities. But it takes that bold first step, and I say, let's take it.
Let's take it. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my questions are mostly going to be directed towards Emily. First of all, under your recommendation, what does the preference list look like now, if we were to implement that?
This actually might be a question for LaShelle, but I'll try and I'll ask her. I think you're asking what the limited preference waitlist would look like?
Yeah, you have four items on the preference list, rent burden, disabled veterans, I think was one of them.
Oops. I think you're asking about this with the current waitlist?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the descriptor of the current preferences and the general voucher waitlist. What we would be recommending, and I think SHRA would as well, is creating a new, although we have eleven waitlists, creating a new waitlist, which would be a limited preference waitlist, simply for folks going through our coordinated entry system for homeless. So you could live on multiple waitlists, I think, LaShelle, correct? So within, within the limited preference waitlist, the priority we for homeless, but I believe we could also implement additional preferences, like the residency, if that was, if that was preferred. Is that correct, LaShelle? Maybe I should. Does that make sense? No.
It might make sense to somebody else, I got confused.
Okay, so I'll try, and then maybe I'll have LaShelle try. So we could, a limited preference waitlist allows to create a whole new waitlist simply for these six hundred set-aside vouchers for the two-year period. Access to that waitlist would likely be through a community partner, perhaps SSF or perhaps some other homeless service providers, to ensure that the people on that waitlist are A, homeless, but B, also receive, more importantly, receive the supportive services. So that list would probably, you know, be longer than capacity, so within that list of simply homeless folks, we could...
I'm just talking about the two hundred public housing units that become available every year, that the city can direct the waitlist, I assume, the preferences. What would the new preference look like under your criteria?
Yeah, I think I'll let LaShelle answer that one, because it's a little bit different than what I'm...
So if you're looking at just the public housing units, which is what I hear you saying, currently, as you can see, there are no preferences that are listed for public housing, so it's on a first-come, first-served. If you implement a preference for homeless, then that would be the preference now established for public housing, and it would be the only preference, unless you wanted to institute additional ones. But what we're talking about is just putting homeless as now a new preference for public housing.
For public housing.
Yes. Does that clarify?
And the other people would just not get a house, a public house?
Unless they met the criteria of being homeless, because we know that when we pull people for public housing, that there, we find homeless individuals. I mean, we've housed people who've been sleeping in their cars, all kinds of situations that have come up. So if they meet that new criteria, then they would actually be at the top of the list, and then new people who meet the criteria would be next for public housing.
And, but the public housing units have one, two, and three-bedroom houses, right?
Correct. We have some zero, but one, two, three, four, and five-bedroom units that are scattered throughout the city and the county.
So an individual homeless person would not be issued a four-bedroom house, for instance?
No, we could not put an individual in a four-bedroom unit.
So that would minimize that conflict?
Right. You have to match the family size to the bedroom.
Got it. All right. There are a couple assumptions built into, first of all, I really like your presentation. It's well thought out, well put together. Several assumptions have been in it, though. One of them is the county participation, which a lot of people have already spoken to. The second one is the assumption that we give a landlord fourteen hundred dollars and they will accept the voucher. Where did that number come from?
Yeah. So what we assume is paying a premium of fifteen percent over the maximum allowed rent. So SHRA is limited to paying what's called the fair market rent, which is derived by HUD. And in many cases, the actual market rent, especially in hot-market areas, is way more than they can actually legally pay. So what we, what we are suggesting is some sort of premium. I estimated fifteen percent premium, that may or may not be, we might need more, in some cases less, in some cases, but hopefully it would average out to approximately fourteen to fifteen hundred dollars per household for a course of a year. That could certainly be adjusted depending on market conditions.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to add to your question earlier is that just remember in your, the resolution on the thirty-first, redirecting the public housing units, you specifically called out homeless families and at-risk families, purposely, I think, to protect the situation you're describing of folks who might be just on the edge of homelessness but already on the waitlist, that they wouldn't, that they would still have the same opportunity. You guys added that to the resolution, we read it into the record on the thirty-first, so that was an addition.
And the other assumption Mr. Hanson spoke to, that is, this whole thing is predicated on moving people through a system and out. And I have really grave concerns as to whether or not there is an out. The housing market is so tight that people with cash are having a difficult time finding a place. And whether or not there's an eventual place to move to is something that has to be addressed. I know that's not in your bailiwick, but it is in the city's bailiwick.
Oh, yeah.
We have seen in my district really quality affordable housing that everyone would be happy to live in. I've seen the same thing in Councilwoman Ashley's, Ashby's district. I think part and parcel to this, Mr. Mayor, is that we need to identify what is it that we can do right now as a city to expedite the construction of affordable housing in Sacramento? We all have brownfields in our community. We all have empty lots that aren't getting filled. What can we do to encourage these fields, these empty lots, to be developed into affordable housing projects? What incentives would we have to put out there? What fees do we have to waive? What processes do we have to minimize in order to make this happen pretty soon? Because if we adopt this, we're going to have people coming through this system and they're going to need somewhere to go.
Right. Well, I want to suggest that over the next four to six to eight weeks, we agendize a workshop here, it's already sort of in the hopper here, on the issue of affordable housing beyond the homeless population. Because that is, it's essential. And we know we don't have any money in the Housing Trust Fund to speak of, and, you know, and, and so this is an issue. It's land, it's money, it's regulatory reform, it's a whole host of things. So let's agendize that for a discussion just like this, so that we can begin looking at our existing policies, how we might seek to change them to move towards a more aggressive production of affordable housing.
I agree, hold up.
Yeah.
Identify the impediments that are out there.
Yes.
And what we can do, things that are under our control.
Like we're doing here. Okay, Council, thank you. Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this issue. I'll, I'll try to be real brief, since we've already kind of, I think, hit home the issue that we need to act with urgency. One, a couple of comments here on SHRA. When we talked about the outreach, I think the concern that Councilmember Chenier brought up about our, our audience, we have obviously an obligation to have a conversation with our residents, which we should fulfill. But I think our, our, our target folk, focus should also be on the need to outreach to the folks who, who can help better understand how we can use the system and how to access the system. So that would be my, my encouragement to either start to figure out, you know, what other contact points in the communities we can do to target the, that, that audience. I do have, I do have some concerns that if we only focus on the residents, then, then what kind of feedback are we getting? On the issue of, of, you know, the county services, one, I think that's great that we take any opportunity that we can to leverage our dollars. But I don't think we should be replicating a county service.
No.
I do think we need to take advantage of any effort that we have to access more resources and take those initiatives to, to make sure we do it. On the, I mean, I think a, a good idea that was brought up before, and then thanks for, for mentioning this, Councilmember Hanson, but also, I, I think the Independent Budget Analyst Office might be a good avenue for us to also look at staffing purposes for trying to assist in this issue area. It's going to feed into our overall budget conversation anyway, so I think that's a, a recommendation of where the staff could be. And speaking of budget conversations, I know that one of the top issues that, over the last two years on our budget conversations, what's important to our districts, is the issue of code enforcement and solid waste. And just from my experience in, in the issues of our commercial corridors and even within the neighborhoods, we see not just illegal dumping from the scrupulous folks who want to not pay their tipping fees, but we do see that there is additional, you know, trash and solid waste that is a result of homelessness. So I think from a budget conversation, if we address that issue, it would help in our commercial corridors. I know our business improvement districts are already spending a lot of money with private contractors to look at that. The Solid Waste Authority is working with our team now to figure out how do we look at bus stops and clean up bus stop areas where, and how do we make more efficient use of our trash cans? So, you know, looking and having a conversation with their Solid Waste Authority as well. But between the issue of property damage, the issue of solid waste and trash, I think the, the conversation with getting our business improvement districts engaged in leveraging dollars would be an essential one, not just our healthcare providers. That would probably be an easier way for our business entities to get engaged and looking at funding and leveraging these resources. Second, I do also want to thank our police department and Emily and everyone out there. I know our impact team was answering questions today at the College Greens and Glenbrook Neighborhood Association to get the public better educated on, on what the needs are. I think we, we, as much as we talk about, as much as it's in the newspapers, there, there still is kind of a big mystery on the complexity of, of the issues of homelessness. And the more we, we go out to the public and, and discuss the challenges that we face and how it's not one singular issue that's affecting every single homeless person, because I think sometimes the general public can typecast all homelessness. And there's, there's issues with youth, there's issues with drug dependency, there's issues with veterans. I mean, it's across the spectrum. So the more we do with our education, so I want to thank chiefly in our, our impact officers who were out there talking with our neighborhood associations on the complexity of the issue. The, the last thing, you know, Larry, I think to your point, you know, one of the, the big key things I pushed on, on our planning department that we approved and which is a positive step, was the reduction in the impact fees. So we took a significant step on the issue of making it more, more, more viable, financially viable, to build in vacant lots. And I think, John, I think Danberg, you had mentioned how we're going to work with our, the development community to find out what are the major, the challenges in some of the areas where the property values are so, so low that development doesn't pencil out. So what are the things we can do? So I appreciate the fact that our city staff is already looking at the most, most difficult areas to build, particularly in our, our communities, Larry, down in the south area. They, they do have challenges where the cost of construction is more expensive than the, the cost of, of what you can actually sell a home or construct. In fact, we had one property already fall through down in the Lemon Hill area. So I, I, I think that the impact fee program we just passed that targets those needy areas is a good start. It also focuses on the transit area, so in areas that our vulnerable, vulnerable population would likely also be able to get support. It focuses in, on that. And then the, the last piece I'll ask is that we look at our legislative priorities to include, to include different ways to, and not just through the legislative process, but through the state budget process. And I asked LaShelle and SHRA to get some information that, that maybe we can push as part of a legislative priority, ways to look at RASA properties right now and the restrictness that the, that when we re, read, when we got rid of redevelopment, we put such a strictness on some properties like old motels and old mobile home parks, which are in many places, the places where are most needy and people that are at the edge of homelessness rely on, yet they're treated like a commercial property and don't have the flexibility of, of, of a housing successor agency. So I think if that became also part of our legislative priority and start advocating for flexibility from the Department of Finance on that piece, that might add up other vacant spots that we can actually use. So those are my comments. I do think it's a combination of everything. Great job on the, the new idea. We need our county partners. We're all working together, and we're in the same pueblo, so let's, looking forward to it.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just start off first by thanking you for your leadership on this, on this issue that we're dealing with, and, and really appreciate your sense of urgency of making these, this happen. I, I don't think we would be at the place that we are right now without your leadership, so I appreciate that deeply. But I also want to thank Sacramento Steps Forward, Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, Emily, our own homeless coordinator, and all the others that are out there who are working with us on this winning team that we have that's actually going to get us to the goal that we set at the very beginning of the meeting. We talked about implementation of our 131 resolution, our ability to permanently house 1,600, and how to make sure the 1,600 don't become housed homeless during the period of time that we're working together. And I want to keep a set on that, because I, I don't know that, I don't know that I have a real good timeline as to, I don't know when I'm across the goal, right? I don't know when that's going to happen. And I'm trying to make sure that I keep in perspective the reality of when it is that we're going to be able to get to that point, of being able to achieve those three goals. And I think it's not only me that has to have a realistic expectation, but I think all of us have to have a realistic expectation. So at some point in time, I, I've got to know, and, and LaShelle, this kind of helped me with your timeline. When I looked at your timeline of getting, doing the public outreach, I saw a June timeline that comes back in June. But I don't know how that moves us to implementation. So if we don't get that back until June, when do we actually move into implementation? And, and so I'm trying to get a realistic timeline to see when is, that we cross the goal line. Somebody can answer that for me.
As I understand, well, go ahead, please. In terms of when, if, no, please. Just, if, when, what's the earliest we would, we collectively would have access to the vouchers for these purposes to match the vouchers with the beginning dollars of services? When could we house the first person off the street using this, what we talked about tonight?
Well, we would actually submit, after going through the process, we would submit it to HUD. And then it's really in their, in their, their court.
I think I saw 75 day...
They have 75 days in which to comment. And those comments could be approved, you're ready to go. Those comments could be, you need to make these adjustments or changes. In the past, sometimes they'll give us comments of things that we'll have to do differently. But they'll be scrutinizing the process to make sure that you, you, you follow through on the process. But they have 75 days.
Okay. So that gives me a more realistic timeline of what we're talking about. I think since we are trying to act with a sense of urgency, and, and we've done that by creating the new warming centers, right? We, we had, we had an issue with people sleeping on the outside, dealing with the rain and the cold. We've had, even had people who have died as a result of the experience. And so we created these warming centers, and we've done it in several different locations and different places. I appreciate Councilmember Hanson's challenge to each one of us to take a look at where we could have additional warming centers. But I think one of the things that's missing for me is, the comment that was made is housing without services would be a failure. Housing without services would be a failure. And so the two go together. If we're really going to be successful, you have to have housing and you have to have the services. And so to put a best practice in place right now is why can't we have the services with our warming centers? Why can't we have the services with our winter sanctuary? Why can't we have the services with all the different, and I'm asking that question because I don't know the answer, and I'm trying to figure out, how do we create that best practice now so that when we get into the permanent housing, we've already created that?
The warming, if I may, I may not, but the warming centers are actually a very good test ground, if you will, because what we, I know what Emily and her team have tried to do is to try to bring some of the navigators, and Ryan as well, the navigators to the warming centers, to help actually get people out of the warming centers into services and housing, but not enough housing. However, go ahead. To what degree are we employing the navigators, Ryan and Emily, at the warming centers?
I think, I think it's a really good point, and I, I would, I would agree with the mayor says, that we're testing a few sort of concepts with the warming centers in a very small scale. The first is the low barrier entry. You pretty much come as you are to the warming centers. We are providing, to the extent possible, some navigation services, there's some medical services there. The, you know, the warming centers are only open a certain time of the day, there's only a certain capacity, so it's, it's a small scale model. The other important, but I, I 100% agree, the concept behind this new program would be that services start working with you when you're unsheltered and follow you through, all the way through into your house. And another thing the council did, just to remind you, earlier last year, was to start supporting the creation of intensive services in shelters, in our existing shelters. You, you helped keep our shelters open 24/7. That was another incremental step towards making shelters less of just a roof over your head and more of a place to access services and start the path towards housing. We certainly, you know, rely on our shelter providers a lot, and they do an amazing job with what they have. But it really is a matter of both resources for them to be intensive and purposeful, and then the housing at the end to exit somebody, too. But I, I think we're, we're incrementally getting there.
Yeah. And I guess I want to go back to the sense of urgency for me. I, I've worked in the winter sanctuary for the last four to five years. And I've worked in there eight hours at a shot, as far as being a volunteer, working with them. And to work there without having the services to be able to help them to get through that moment of time that I've got that eight hours with them or the 24 hours that they spend with us, I, I just don't think we've maximized our time. And so I'm trying to get all of, all of the partners at the table to say, how do we put all of, how do we not have fragmented services, but how do we get all of our partners working together in order to have a comprehensive solution that deals with people where they are right now?
Yes.
So, you know, it's, it's just something I've seen that I think there's an opportunity. And I, I know we want to get there ultimately with permanent housing. I'm saying, why not right now with temporary, with the temporary situations that we have? So that's just a point that I wanted to put out on the table. I've got 15 pages of notes, and I know we don't have enough time tonight to go through them. So I will call all the partners, and we'll sit in my office, and we'll go through a lot of these. I just want to make one other point in this whole thing. Two more points. There was a, a slide that was put up that says 250,000 live in poverty, 25,000 are housed but at risk, 5,000 without permanent housing, and 2,000 unsheltered. And I'm just trying to figure out, if I look at the 250,000 living in poverty, is there a formula that we use that ultimately tells us that people will end up unsheltered out of that?
There isn't. Actually, it's really difficult to determine amongst people who live in poverty, who will pull themselves out of poverty, who will stay living in poverty but sheltered, and who will fall into homelessness. In the, in the days of the stimulus of, of former President Obama, we had a little bit of a test scenario of three years of running a prevention program. And, you know, what we found is while there are some common indicators of folks who are likely to fall into homelessness, they tend to be stuff like, you've had previous bouts of homelessness, female-headed households, you know, history of incarceration. There are some common denominators. There's no magic formula to figure out amongst these 100 really impoverished households who will fall into homelessness. That's what makes prevention programs so difficult, because if you cast your net too wide, then you're sort of thinning out the resources. And if you cast it too narrow, you're sort of, people fall through. But the best estimates that, that we know off in the research is about 10% of, of folks in poverty at some point in their life may touch a homeless experience.
And at what point in time do youth fall into this whole equation? Youth who are couch hopping from house to house and who may be living in a car but not living in a permanent housing? Are there numbers in this as well?
Yeah, so if you're, if you're couch surfing, whether you're a youth or not, you'd fall into that 25,000 precariously housed, just on the brink. If you're actually in a car, you act, you are considered both homeless and unsheltered. A car is, 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 is at the very bottom piece of that triangle. So living in a vehicle, living in, outside, living in another place not meant for human habitation, like an abandoned building or, or the likes, would all fall into that last year.
Okay. So again, I'll, I'll get a meeting for all of us to sit together and go through all these questions. I think we're on the right page, Mayor. I think we're moving in the right direction. And I know, right now, I feel like it might be more fragmented than I want it to be, but all the elements are there, and they just now, in my opinion, need to be put together so that they're working together to deal with the issue that we have in front of us. And I feel like we're moving in that direction. I just don't know if it's as fast as I want it to be or any of us want it to be.
It's not as fast as we want it to be.
Right.
As fast as we can. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, so I, good news, I'm last up of the council members. And other good news, I only have three points. Most of what I think has already been said, but on items like this where we're not going to vote, I think it's important to say something, because council takes a lot of direction from what we're, you know, what we're going to say here. So, you know, I agree with most of the things that my colleagues have said. This is obviously a tremendous opportunity brought in by our mayor, so wonderful leadership on, on your part. And I would just only say, I... And I would just only say, I think great leadership from both guys in red ties for the city of Sacramento, Howard Chan, and our city manager. Having been here quite a while, I can tell you, I, I think it takes a certain kind of leadership to address particular issues, and with those two in the center seats, we probably have the best shot at addressing this issue in the shortest amount of time. Of course, built on the backs, as many of you said, of the work that we've done over the last few years, but really well-positioned and with the right leadership, and that should be noted today. And I agree with Jeff that if we can take $5 million, which is a somewhat difficult decision to make in our current, you know, state of affairs, but parlay it into $20 million, it makes the decision a whole heck of a lot easier. And it also will offset costs in other areas, as we all know. Next, I just want to say that this workshop process, Mayor, works a whole lot better for me, because to me, tonight, we played to our strengths. We played to our team's strengths, and I don't mean just our team, I mean, like, the whole room's team and the partners that we have in the seats, and I think that's what the city of Sacramento does best. That's my observation. Maybe others would not agree, but I think, you know, we are often called on to stand in front of the train that's coming at us when nobody else wants to, and the city of Sacramento does everything we can to try to hold those issues back, to try to lift up the region, and in order to do that, the only way I have ever seen us be success, no matter what the issue is, flood control, arenas, development, you name it, has been when we pull all of our partners together and we build off of what's great about each of them. And I think we have a wonderful team, most of them sitting up here in this front row tonight, and they all spoke. And Michelle, I think you're doing a wonderful job navigating a tough, tough situation. We put you in a tough situation, but man, I don't, your stars shining brighter than ever, so good on you, great work for you and your agency. Last, I agree with the mayor's statement, and I think this is, to me, probably the most important statement of the night, and that is that, you know, we want to be about success. We want to do the thing that helps the most people, and in order to do that, we have to be totally open to what our role is. And I think we're heading down the right path when we talk about having a fiduciary duty or being the conduit for funding.
Agent.
Yeah, fiscal agent, but taking on the fiduciary side of the issue and being a conduit or an agent, whichever, however you want to say it, but the fiduciary duty, meaning that the money flows through the city. I really believe that's where we'll land, and to see us kind of headed in that direction, I think is, is a smart way to go. We, there's no way to do this without partnering without, with the county or Sutter, and I was just mentioning to Councilmember Hanson, my husband runs the emergency room at Sutter at night in the city of Sacramento. And he told me that they have received so many critically ill, very sick people from the most recent shelter that we opened. It more than triples what they have received from other groups, and I talked to the mayor about this, and we both agreed that that was really a good thing, because that meant we were reaching people that we haven't reached before. But also, many of the folks are not from Sacramento, they're from surrounding areas, trying to get to us, to get to services, to get the help that they need. And so that is going to need to be tracked at some point, so that we have what we need for tools on our side to reach out to partners in other counties, West SAC, or people don't, unless you're in government, you don't pay attention to where boundaries are and which district you're in and which city you're in. You're just, you're just chasing what you need. We, you know, especially if you're in a really desperate situation, and I think it's our job then to track that, and we need to pay attention and also note what's working. The other thing about that particular shelter is that we do have some of the services being rendered there. So there is a nurse from Sutter that's showing up, that's probably helping to evaluate people that need additional help, and some of the things that Councilmember, Vice Mayor Jennings was suggesting are starting to happen there, and I think we can see the benefits of that. On the voucher situation, tonight, again, not a voting item, so not worth getting into the weeds of, I voted in support of it, I remain in support. I do have some concerns, probably most in line with what you laid out, Rick, in terms of, and where I think Larry was going, with how these priorities lay out. And for me, it's really simple. I just want to make sure kids are a priority. I just want to make sure that we don't have homeless families on the street or about to be on the street, or living in cars, or living in hotels, or somebody's garage because they're just waiting to be next on that voucher list. And I think we added the language, and I know the mayor tried, worked with me specifically to make sure that that, that I was comfortable with that language, but it still makes me a little nervous. So I just want to keep watching that as we go through this process, that I feel confident at the end, that whether it's 200 public housing units or 1,600 vouchers, that kids are a priority of the city of Sacramento, always, in whatever situation they're in. So just a closing thought here, no vote, but just my opinion is that lots of devil's in the details, of course, and that's all to come, but I think we saw sort of the potential of our city in tonight's workshop, based on the really wonderful talent that is in the room and the willingness of people to step out a bit of their comfort zone and work together. We need resources, that's obvious, and this gets us one step closer, so a good, I think a good night for the workshop.
Thank you very much, Angelique. Thank you so much to all the colleagues. So, we have a lot of public testimony, and of course, we're going to hear everybody. I just want to say that anybody who wants to speak on homelessness, this is now your opportunity to speak on it. We're not going to have you testify on this item and then speak in public comment about homelessness. This is, this is your opportunity, since obviously we're workshopping. Excuse me?
Is it a different part of the topic?
No, no, I mean, if it's a different topic than homelessness, you're welcome to speak in public comment, of course, but no.
Speak on the housing and on the...
You can speak on housing, you can speak on homelessness generically, whatever you want to speak on, on the subject and housing.
My time to speak?
Housing, we got a list here. Housing and homelessness, we're going to call, I'm just going to say, don't, we're trying, it's 10:20 at night, and we want to hear from everybody, but we'll hear from everybody once on the issue of housing and homelessness. Okay? So let's go.
All right, we'll start with Robert Copeland.
We're calling people by name. We'll get to you, ma'am.
And then Anthony Lear and David Andre, and then Brandon Murphy, and then Fago.
Okay, my name is Robert Copeland. I think what the city council is doing is great for Sacramento. Thank you. Do we, do any of you know anything about the, what the state government's doing about the homeless issue, like SP3 by Jim Beal?
That's the housing, that's the permanent source of the...
It's a $3 billion bond.
Housing bond, right. The state of California, I'm telling you, just gave us some good news in Sacramento today. They're willing to help us fund a services pilot that could generate millions of dollars for the city, so I want to thank the city.
Well, this is a $3 billion bond issue.
I understand.
As half for affordable housing, infrastructure, parks, I think roads or repairs. I think that's a great, but I think Governor Brown's going to veto it.
I would vote for it if I were in the legislature.
I think Governor Brown's going to veto it, to tell you the truth, knowing him.
Well, I bet you it doesn't, it might not get to Governor Brown's desk, actually, but it's a good idea, and I hope that it gets a lot of attention in the legislature. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, Anthony?
Yes, my name is Anthony Lear. I wanted to thank the mayor in our meeting back on the 10th and all the city council. I know you're working real hard on homelessness. I just have one issue on the housing placement, the coordinated entry access on housing. And when we, I was assessed three years ago, and once you're assessed, it doesn't matter how long it goes, you cannot be reassessed. My health has gone from needing no surgeries on my left foot to needing five surgeries and spending eight to 10 months in bed, now needing another one, and they just will not reassess. I don't know how that system works, but it doesn't seem fair. But I know everybody's crying in their...
We have Ryan here who's helped thousands of people, and I'm sure he would be happy to help you.
And Lee.
Okay.
But I will talk to him when we're done.
Okay.
But I want to thank you, Saul. It sounds real exciting, and I know you work real hard, and we're getting there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Andre?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of council. David Andre. What we're failing to talk about is, how about the people that are right outside this place tonight? Can we allow some type of emergency housing for these people? Whether it be, I don't know, bringing some with the National Guard? Let's bring in tents. We got people unhoused, we got them outside. Right now, we could help them real easy. There's community groups that are willing to do that, they're willing to manage it, but let's help some people like right away, because this is a long, and thank you, guys, really thank you. This is a long process when people are wet and they're cold. So please take that into consideration, the people that are right outside the door. Thank you.
David, as always.
Hey, Brayden Murphy?
Brayden.
Following Brayden, then is Fago, Pastor Gainsborough, and Wanda.
How you doing, Brayden?
Good. I'd like to start by saying thank you to the mayor for having a meeting with me. We covered a lot of topics, and I hope he would agree that it was respectful but, but very heated. I mean...
It was both.
We went for it.
It was, and I enjoyed it.
And what I would say is, you were very honest and very passionate about two things, and I thought both things were genuine. You laid out to me how important permanent housing is to you, and so I want to withdraw that I said that you don't care, because I, I think that you do care. It's, it's a little bit unclear, the lengths that you're willing to go to.
Attend the meeting right now, how about that?
It is, it is a little bit unclear, though, the lengths that you're willing to go to, and one of the things that you made clear is that you don't want to criminalize homelessness and you don't want things to be geared to be confiscated.
Right.
And I'm honestly not like attacking, just genuinely, I don't understand if that's clear in the, in the ordinance, and I know that it was possibly going to be aginionized or however you say that, to talk about that. So if I could ask that you...
No, go ahead.
If I could just ask that you explain how, what you envision, these people that are out here that don't have housing, what they're allowed to do? If I have a blanket, can I use it?
Yes.
Where can I sleep, where can I not?
Yes.
So that people are very clear about that, because everybody asked me how our meeting went, and when I explained it, that you want people to get behind permanent housing. We kind of disagreed on that. I feel like we are behind both. It would be a lot easier for people to get behind the permanent housing if they can at least survive for now. So if you can just kind of lay out, you know, as mayor, what the homeless people can do and at least get to where they feel that they can survive or better, I think that would be great.
Thank you, Brayden, thank you.
Yep.
So, Ms., the city manager, remember where we left this, and I don't want to, we don't have time to go into great detail tonight, but where we left this, if you remember, is that the city manager was going to come back, is going to come back in about a week. Give a little longer if necessary with clarification of our existing, what they call general orders, to make it clear that while we are not legalizing camping, which I know that's what you want, that we are not in the practice, we have not been and are not going to be in the practice of confiscating blankets, sleeping bags, and other lifesaving necessities for people who are sleeping. That is going to be clarified. That is going to be clarified. Now, if somebody is arrested separately for a drug charge or for an assault or something else, and they're taken to jail, that's a different story. But otherwise, if it has occurred, I know that there was the January, February Occupy period, but going forward here, that's going to be the policy, and I think the city manager is going to clarify that in the general order within next week. Howard, do you want to add anything there?
No, we continue to work with the police chief to clarify that in the general orders in the police department. We're in the process of just vetting all that to make sure that we have the unintended consequences addressed, and we will bring this back to the council.
Yeah, very soon. So, now, you don't agree 100%, but we're trying to find some common ground. Fago?
One thing I want, I do want to clarify is that I'm intending on using this two minutes specifically to speak about housing, because there is a lot to deal with, and I was going to speak on the camping ordinance itself separately.
No, 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 no.
Because there's two different topics.
No, you got two minutes, man, come on.
All right, so there goes any nice comments I had about this.
Bummer.
I love the fact you love silencing the public, just like you did when you diverted the vote from people being able to vote on the arena. Great job. You seem to have a history of liking to silence people. I wanted to come up here and have compliments. I wanted to come up here and be happy, because I do like this plan. We do support permanent housing. I was also going to explain to you what Housing First, that was started in Utah, actually is. It's not saying no services. It's not saying services first. It's saying we need the housing to put these people in, so that we can get them into the services, so they can actually succeed in those services. Attempting to get people to utilize these services prior to being in someplace stable has a very low success rate. Most people, while they're homeless, are not capable of living up to the responsibilities required to fulfill these services. That's why it's called Housing First, not Service First. That's, the Services First is what rapid rehousing is. There is a difference. Also, it kind of concerns me that there's over, there's 70,000 people on this waiting list with only 660 new spaces opening up a year. So, in the process, you're not really getting some, like, that's a lot of people, that's a long time, that's a lot of years that people are waiting. So that's also of concern. Another major concern that I do have, even though I do like this idea, I do think there's some kinks that should be worked out, is the fact that you're still not addressing the solutions that can be handled right now, since I can't get into just the housing. There's...
Camping.
Ah, see, now I'm trying to rush.
Take a few more sec, take another 30 sec, go.
We need rent control to help for the preventative measures.
Let us see.
Rent control needs to be reestablished. This housing market blowing up the way it is, is, it's insane. It's what's causing more people to become homeless, and it's going to make more of these people that are on the waitlist now not able to afford housing as more homeless people are taking this housing. And so far as the camping ordinance, that's something that can happen right now. In the meantime, even with this, if the fastest way you can house somebody, if it were to pass right now, would still be another 75 days of people suffering and people being criminalized. And so far as people confiscating gear, I have to figure out how to rip the video off of Facebook, but yeah, we have videos of people confiscating gear, just within this last week. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pastor Gainsborough.
Who's next after Pastor Gainsborough?
Wanda is after the pastor. Following Wanda is Howard Lawrence, and then James Little.
Very good. Pastor, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. And city council is getting late for all of us. It's passed my curfew as a grandpa. Thirty, well, actually, 2,700 years ago, the great prophet Isaiah said this in Isaiah 32, verse 17. He said, "The work of righteousness shall be peace, and the effect of righteousness doing the right thing, quietness and assurance forever." So I just speak peace to all of us right now. I am, I am so glad for what has been spoken about tonight. I call the mayor El Gabor, which is the Hebrew word for champion, but I want to call all of you El Gabor, and Emily, and Ryan, and Dion, and our two sisters over here, and every one of us that's been fighting to help the homeless. If it's possible, in my final minute, can, can short Officer Tall, that's his last name, could he press the button and show us just who's out, out there? Because the Bible says, is that all right, Mayor?
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
Can you open the window here, just, would you go ahead and say, fine?
All right, I don't know, I've never had this request before.
Bible says in Proverbs 29:18, where there is no vision, the people, where there is no vision, the people perish, as my time is passing.
Okay, it's okay with me.
Right out that window, you can see there are some of our fellow citizens, and I'm excited about what we're looking at tonight. I'm excited about the entrepreneurial finding of the Whole Person Care Program and of the city being willing to look at committing the $5 million. You talk about Sacramento being a destination city. Last year, Los Angeles, which is one of my least favorite cities, having been to Europe five times, and London, Paris, and Rome, let's make Sacramento a destination city. Last year, Sac, Los Angeles had 47 million visitors. I don't think it's much of a city to visit, but I think Sacramento has got a lot to visit. Let's make Sacramento a destination city to show off the compassion of the city council and the mayor and the citizens of the city. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Wanda?
Good afternoon, evening.
Good evening.
Evening, yeah.
Evening, yeah. Anyway, thank you for all your hard work. I do appreciate, I don't know what I'm going to do now, once everything gets implicated, I won't have no one to yell at.[607.79][607.79](Laughter) So...
This is a dilemma.
Yeah.
This is, what do we do?
I'm sure I'll find something in the woodwork to... So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank this board, to thank the council, to thank the mayor, and everybody involved for all your hard work. Because I know it's not been easy for you guys to hear our complaints constantly for the last 40 years. Some of you haven't been here 40 years, but there's been a lot of complaints. I do appreciate and will support us going forward.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
You've got a long way to go, but thank you so much. Your words...
We've gone through the worst part.
Your words mean a lot, can't tell you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Members of the council, we've been on a long journey on this issue, talking about homelessness. Many times I stood here and advocated for specific issues, the three I center, you know, services to go with the Housing First strategy. And this is sort of like, I woke up and all I've asked for is, you know, is being attempted and is being focused on. I don't have a criticism. I, you know, I've said, I think, to this council a number of times, to solve this problem, we need political courage. Well, I think we've seen political courage here tonight. Thank you very much. We'll work with you on this journey.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker then is James Little. Following James is John Foley, Laura Mendoza, and the last speaker, Monica Vehar.
Very good, Mr. Little, welcome, sir.
Welcome. Welcome. Yeah, my name is James Little, I wanted to let you know what I saw at the levee about three weeks ago, a week before the Super Bowl. They came and took everybody's stuff like the park rangers was there, the city police, and the sheriff work crew. They put everything on the police truck and they took it off and put it on some dump truck, where the sheriff work crew were taking. I don't know where the sheriff work crew take their property, what they compensate, but it is lost in the system. I tell them people, if I go up to 28th and C at that city dump, people stop probably sitting there as we sit, as we stand. And I've got to go, I went up there once, but it was too late and I'm going to have to go back up there again and try to find my stuff because my stuff probably sitting there too. You know, I was there, you know, when they took everybody's stuff. I just seen them take it and, you know, the city pulls a tag and then turn it in. But the sheriff work crew, who knows what they do with it? And that's who had it. They put it, they transferred it from truck to truck.
We can, again, look into this for you. Don't know, we could look at the circumstances, might be outside of our city jurisdiction, but we're happy to look into this for you. Okay, Mr. Little?
County, but they probably took it at the city dump on 28th and C. I picked up my stuff many times there.
Can we have somebody please help Mr. Little and try to figure out?
What my things is that?
Yeah.
They don't know. Nobody knows. It lost in the system.
What would you like us to do?
Well, what I would like for people to do is quit taking people's stuff. They need to pay these people all what they took.
No, I appreciate it.
Figure out a system that will work without destroying personal property.
By next week, by next week, again, we can only speak for our jurisdiction, not the county or the, but from our jurisdiction, we are going to clarify the policy as we've discussed with the group and discussed now publicly around confiscation. That will be clarified within several weeks.
But you know the one I'm talking about, on 28th and C Street, there's a city dump there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
That's all I got to say.
Got the message, got it.
Hi, John. Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Foley from Sacramento Self-Health Housing. A couple of years ago, the council decided to take action and set up a program called Common Sense, that I think Councilmember Hanson referenced earlier. And the idea was to do outreach, to identify people out on the street who really needed help, and then temporarily house them before they could move into permanent housing. And that's been a good program in a sense that good work has been done with outreach through Sacramento Steps Forward. And we were able to house people temporarily who were perhaps going to die if we hadn't done it. The problem was that there wasn't really enough permanent housing to rapidly move people through that system. We've cut back from housing 20 people at a time down to 10 because it's just, it's just not working. So what I think you're talking about tonight is adding the piece that you didn't feel was your role or in your purview previously, the permanent housing. And I really applaud you for that. I want to remind you that part of what Steps Forward's been doing is identifying the people on the street that hopefully will be the ones that you help get housed through their coordinated entry system. And I hope you'll find ways to utilize that system, although I know some of the people that will be targeted might be a little different than the ones that HUD's telling them to target now.
We're going to use the existing list that already exists through Sacramento Steps Forward, absolutely.
I hear you. But there's been some criticisms, just want to emphasize it's worth working with them.
Okay.
The final thing I want to say is that the other piece that we've noticed, both with rapid rehousing and permanent housing, when we have to rent things out in the market, is because the market is so tight, how difficult it is to find housing. I think on average, it's taking about four months to find housing, people have vouchers these days. I noticed the great work that you did earlier this evening in emphasizing how for the youth that are seeking employment, you want to reach out to employers and have them get involved. I think in the same way, if you could help reach out to landlords, and Jim's here tonight, he can talk to you about some landlords maybe you could reach out to, and find ways to incentivize that. The money, I'm sure, helps some, but I think money isn't really the biggest issue. It's supportive services, it's being there for them, it's reassuring them that it's really going to work. And that would be a huge help that the council could, a role the council could take, I think. So, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
I want to, I want to say that a lot of these properties managers, they're run by property management, and so they get a tax break, or they get a tax, some kind of a tax thing. So, I just hope that the city council is aware of this tax thing. And secondly, I have firsthand been with SHRA because of my son. And I'm just curious about what are you going to do when, because it seems like the Public Housing Authority can be the judge and jury. Because it says right here that if the decision's made by public housing staff is that the participant is not complying with the program, rules, the case shall be processed for termination. And you made a very good point, Mr. Jennings, about housing these people and keeping them housed. So what are you going to do if they have really severe mental illness and they act out in their illness and that's part of their disability? What are you going to do? Are you going to terminate them like you did my son? Yeah. How are you going to keep them housed? Because you know what, he was on Shelter Plus, and he's gone back to get Shelter Plus, and he's denied. So how are you going to, and now he's paying $675 for a room and board where he's in two rooms, in one room sharing it with another person. He's paying over three-quarters of his income. So how are we doing this?
Excuse me. It's...
Point of order, please. So the conversation should be happening to the council.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Please, and not directed to any staff member.
So...
Well, I'm just quoting what they're saying here because it seems like they can be the judge and the jury.
It's right now, you're talking to the council, that's what...
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead. Thank you, Vice Mayor Jennings.
I'm done.
That's good, no, so...
How are you going to keep these people housed? If you're going to terminate...
We certainly can ask Emily and our team here to look at the specific situation with your son and LaChelle and the team to look at this. We don't have time to get into the specifics here, but I think your testimony is an appropriate yellow flag for all of us here.
Yes.
To reiterate what we already have talked about all night, that housing alone, without supportive services and without a full team approach here...
They do have supportive services.
Is not going to allow people to, is not going to allow us to succeed here. So that's what I take, just in terms of your son's situation, be happy again to talk about it.
I'm done with them, but it's just that, you talked about supportive services. This is what's supportive services.
I understand.
And this is what supportive services putting in their recommendation and Public Housing Authority.
I understand. We're doing the best we can.
Hey, Monica? Last speaker.
Hello, mayor, I didn't get a response from you regarding the discussion that I said last week about the warming centers.
Well, what do you, I don't know what you're, you came here last week and said that you're not getting a response from me, I'm here?
Right, and I sent a letter, I gave you a letter also last week, and I haven't had a response.
You hand me the letter and I'll make sure you get a response within a week.
You did get it handed to you last week. But anyway, I should have sent it to Howard Chan as well, since he's the city manager, and I understand that's maybe something that he can follow up in as well. I'm just not sure exactly what each duties are, but I'm thinking it might be the city manager, if your office is unable to. I don't want to answer, I want to know what, right now, can you tell me, can you get the warming centers to open 24/7 or even until 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM, so it's not cold and the people are pushed out so early in the morning?
You want to describe the hours of the warming centers, please?
Sure, the three warming centers that the city is funding are open from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Two of them are open every night through March 31st. And one of them is open weather-dependent, when the weather dips 40 degrees or below or there's a significant rain.
Right, I did see that online, and I was just curious, can we extend those hours? That was the intent of my letter and when I came last week, and tonight. And I did want to say a couple of other things, you know, I don't think it's the city's entire responsibility to handle every detail for every person in this city. So people that are homeless or sick or ill, their families or themselves are going to have to help themselves as well. And my aunt was schizophrenic back east in Massachusetts, and she left her home a couple of times to come to California and nobody knew. And she stayed at the bus stop all day waiting for my mom to pick her up here, and nobody knew. But finally, her son had to get, what is the word when you have court conservatorship over her? And so he was able to make sure the county came in and implemented medication to her on a regular basis. So I don't feel like attacking city staff is the answer. They're trying to do the best they can.
Well, thank you.
However, maybe you can reach out to friends and family to help get, to help yourselves get together also if you have mental issues.
Thank you.
You know, because you're not God, you can't do everything.
We're not God, no, we're not, anything close.
And I appreciate Rick Jennings being at...
Your time is up.
Thank you for going to the center.
Thank you, your time is up, man.
And we do need to get all the infills in the whole city developed. And Barbara Steinberg, a friend of yours and mine, said up and down Stockton...
Time is up.
There are motels and hotels that could be used that have the infrastructure in. So could you look into that?[1378.53][1378.53](Laughter)
I want to calmly answer the first part of your question. On the warming center issue, we've opened six warming centers, and I think it's five or six, and more, five and one or two more to come. And as a result, over the last several weeks for the winter period of time, we are able now to shelter several hundred people on a given night. And that's good. But I will be the first one to tell you that it is not nearly enough. And yes, do I wish that we could keep them open all day? Well, absolutely, it's a resource question. And we are working very hard on the short term, but also the medium and long-term solutions is evidenced tonight. But we're trying, and it's better than it was eight weeks ago. And so, let us admit our own imperfections here in the fact that we're not able, we're not able to shelter everybody. And we're going to keep, we're going to, we're going to keep trying. Okay, that's the end of the workshop. Thank you all very, very much. We do have now more public testimony from people who, from the public, on matters unrelated to the homeless issue. And let's go through those relatively quickly. Again, thank you to everyone who participated tonight and staying till 10 to 11 at night, and for all you do, day and night.
Okay, so we'll start with Greg Glavinovich. Is Greg still here? Following Greg is...
Billy, thank you.
Thad Evans?
Greg left, Thad Evans?
Hey.
Okay, you're up.
Following Thad is John Richards.
Bless you.[1502.83][1502.83](Laughter)
Thank you.[1504.83][1504.83](Laughter) It is a good thing. Okay, here we go.
Go ahead.
I'm going to try to make this very simple.
She bless you.
All right. I, Thad Evans, live at 1230 N Street Park Place, an apartment building for seniors. I oppose the destruction of the California Department of Food and Agricultural Building at 1215 O Street, and the construction of its replacement because the noise will last for three years. A lot of the people in the building are old, including, we have hypertension, noise is what you call the enemy. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, sir, for waiting, for your patience and for coming.
John Richards?
John Richards?
And then Deborah Cummings after John.
Deborah Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, good evening, council members. I live in Councilman Guerra's District 6. I've been up here and talked about this before, as prior to the mayor being here. We had, there, we need, this comes under medical cannabis, I know you guys are probably sick to death of doing all this and hearing all this, and so I get that. The situation, though, is such that there are no dispensaries in the city of Sacramento. I know you've all cut it off at 30, and we have all of that. We had a gentleman that died over at UC Davis Medical Center, was immunocompromised, ended up with a fungal lung infection, and because he was smoking marijuana that had not been tested. And San Francisco K-Ron picked up on it, bought five from four dispensaries and a black-market purchase as well. They're using, one of the dispensaries had product on it that it was Freedom 20, it's commonly referred to, it's a pesticide, it's a fungicide. The product is outlawed in tobacco because when it's heated, it actually creates hydrogen cyanide, and so people can die. So, you know, we have a medical model here in the states that we're most used to, and that's you go to a doctor, they write a prescription or make a recommendation, you then go to a pharmacy or something like that and get the medication. It's very rare that you go to a doctor, they tell you maybe you should be on this or that, and then you go somewhere and have to pick out the medication on your own. That doesn't happen at the pharmacy that I own. You know, they come in, they speak with, it's under the guidance of the pharmacy. We're very highly regulated. We can't bring cannabis into the pharmacy. I have all these doctors asking us to do it because they know of our abilities, but, you know...
We're having March the 7th, where you're having a full hearing on the implementation of the marijuana-related issues, and why don't we add this to the list in terms of discussion? Thank you very much, appreciate you waiting and putting it on our radar. Deborah, how are you?
I'm hanging in there, how are you, Deborah?
Well, thank you for being patient.
A little tired, I got a ticket sitting outside on my car, but I'm going to make it. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of Del Paso Heights. February 17th, I got a call at 7:40 this evening, mind you, I'm still going back and forth to the hospital with my boyfriend, he's in there currently, so I'm a little late getting there, but I'm going to speed this up. February 17th, at approximately 7:45, I received a call from one of my community members. We have a problem here, you guys. And I have talked a little bit about this to you, mayor, when we went on our ride in Del Paso Heights. Marysville and Roanoke is a death trap. Our babies, our seniors, our parents cannot walk safely across this crosswalk. We had a baby just three months ago, her and her mom, the baby's in the stroller, the mom and the baby got hit by this car. Baby big gash on the head. I went out with Fox 40, I also sit on Phil Serna's Reducing African American Child Death. So I take this personally, I am a native of Del Paso Heights. I am what you call a cultural broker. A cultural broker is somebody that job doesn't stop after five. A cultural broker is somebody that get that call in the middle of the night and they get the job done, and that's what I do. job done, and that's what I do.
Can we, Councilmember Hanson may, may have some information on this issue, if you don't mind.
Ms. Cummings, I know Councilmember Warren represents District 2, but one of my constituents contacted me about this, so I followed up with our staff, and I found that tonight we're working on improving that intersection with a new signal called a HAWK, so that it stops cars when a pedestrian's there. And also, I contacted the police captain for the area, Pam Seifert, and she's, she's working on some things as well, so that we can make sure that the two schools, that there's a safe route. And I've got your email address here, so I'll forward you the email I got tonight from the staff.
Okay, progress.
Okay, and just real quickly, just to let you guys know, our community member, Ron Johnson, he has no family here. I've known this man since I was 14 years old. I'm 48 today. We are planning, our community is planning this man's service. How we're going to raise the money to bear him, who knows? But in our community, Del Paso Heights is suffering, and we need some help today. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you very much. Thank you. Hold on, sir, sir. No, 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 we can't, we can't.
Pastor Joan Louis Kennard? Is Pastor Kennard here?
Do you, do you want two minutes to speak, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, if you'll, if you'll just wait, and we'll, we'll make sure you get a chance.
Good evening, all. I'm Pastor Joan Louis Kennard. I'm just talking to the President of Donald Trump. He should go ahead and build this 747 for him, and not only for him, it's for other presidents as well. Also, I just want to put down about legalizing prostitution here in Sacramento, so they can get their SSI or SS, an SSA. Also, keep the recycling going here in Sacramento. Don't stop it, because we have the working disabled who needs the, the funds for, from the recycling centers. Also, keep God in our private schools, Christians, Mormons, Sikhs, Muslims, Buddhists, whatever, keep them there. Keep God in the, in the, in our religion. Also, a prediction of 95,000 AD. Also, I have Ms. Verna Langhorst. She needs her 401K from the state of California. They had taken her money, her $5,000 that she needs to move. She's about to be moved out April the 1st, and if she doesn't get her monies from the state of California, which took her $5,000 401K, she needs, she needs to, needs to help her move. Is this the only money, is this the monies that the California, state of California has taken from people?
Ma'am, your time is, your, your... Time is about up. Thank you very much, Pastor.
Also, what about those that have been evicted from homelessness?
We're, we're working on all that. Thank you for coming tonight, ma'am. We appreciate it, okay? We, we heard a lot of things, but...
Could also, I get some voice on those that had evictions. My significant other has an eviction notice on him.
Okay.
And we need some, some, some help.
Okay, well, if there's, if we can help you, if there's some, yes. You call one of our offices, we will try to help you tomorrow, okay?
I need a card or something like that.
Okay, can we, can we give Pastor Louis a card from somebody? Jacob? If you don't mind, thank you. We'll, we'll try to, we'll try to help you. Are you Guy?
Huh?
No, I'm sorry. Name again, I forgot. I'm sorry.
I'm Big Paul. We talk, I talk to you.
I understand.
My nephew owned the clothing store right in the corner of Roanoke.
You got two, you got two minutes. Go ahead.
All I'm simply saying is that I've been an advocate to install. I watch kids pass by. I'm out there every day, trying to help the kids come from Grant, Castoria High School. I've watched six people got killed in that intersection, six people at different time. I'm the one made the phone call to the city. I'm the one, when they was doing this thing operation, that went ahead and tried to help them. We need that light right there, flashing red light.
Apparently have progress here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I am, hey, I am proud. I'm happy that you guys are doing it, because I've been calling, been calling. I've been trying to get support. Lonnie Wong was supposed to be helping me, and he tried to do everything he can, but I'm telling you, it is bad, real bad. Ron wasn't my friend, and I watched Ron die, died right there in that section last week. I was there. And all I'm simply saying is just that it's about time. Many years, it's been like damn near 10, 10 years coming, and they did surveys, nothing. So, all I'm saying, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is Guy here?
Guy? You're welcome, ma'am.
Following Guy is Charles Ware, and the last speaker is Chazette Taylor.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Guy.
I had my name on the homeless list, too, for speaking, so let me address that first.
Yeah, well, okay.
Well, thank you very much for the 18 million, finding the 18 million, and, Mayor, and thank you for the city council for voting on it, hopefully. Now, on this preference, the residents of Sacramento County, I think it should be more specific, like years of residents. Otherwise, you're going to have like a gold rush, 49er days. I also feel like there should be a cap. They say that the administration of a lot of those funds, half of it goes to the administration. I think there should be a cap on that. And for a short, very short-term thing, that's very inexpensive for these people who are dying on the streets, I think there, there should be someone going around like 2:00 AM in the morning distributing sleeping bags to people who, who don't have a sleeping bag or something very little. It doesn't cost very much money, and a lot of those guys are going to be mentally ill people who just don't have the wherewithal to get to one of those warming centers. I just, now, on this other topic, I just, I feel like the police are not serving the poor and the minorities. They don't discriminate against the minorities. So long as you're poor, they're going to, they're not, they're going, you're not going to get the services from the police like you're going to, like others will get.
Thank you, sir.
Your, your average person.
Thank you, Guy, for coming to.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Daryl, I did put another one in for this here I wanted to talk about, and for some reason you guys are skipping me.
Well, we're not, we're...
I have a legitimate public comment, too, on a separate issue.
Okay, I mean, not, not about the camp, not about the camping, not about the camping ordinance. Okay, go, go. Go ahead, ma'am.
Well, I want to, my name's Chazette Taylor, and Steinberg, and the rest of the council. You guys are wonderful. This is my first time, but you guys are wonderful. And I'm going to come to you like you came to me, and ask me to help you get in here. I helped. I was a part of it, you know, for you, District 2, I think this gentleman, or whomever. I appreciate you guys. Right now, I'm at a crisis to ask you for help on directions, to help, there was more children in this, but they got sick from sitting here so long, to help me with this man on this corner. They say it wasn't a crime, so I can't get help from victim of crime, and I don't know which way to go. I called the city this morning, and that's probably why you got the message today about this corner, is because of me. I'm trying to get some help to help these children bury their father at that light cost.
Oh, I see, okay.
I'm just asking.
So, let, let, so now, now I get that. So, a gentleman was killed on the corner, Mr. Johnson, and you, we're looking for some help to provide burial expenses.
He was homeless also.
He was homeless also, okay.
If you want me to just go, I only had two minutes.
Jacob and Arturo, we will look into this tomorrow and help in any way that we can here. Let, let us look at what it is.
Okay, someone get my name and number, because I'm a spokesman.
But we will help. We need a, we need a point of contact. We need to look into this, and we will try to help, okay? Is that your dad?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. What's your name? I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Sorry. What's your name?
Rhonda Johnson.
Rhonda Johnson.
Yes.
So, you are, how many siblings do you have?
I've got three sisters and one brother.
Okay. And when did Dad pass away? Seventeen.
Friday, Friday night. That was the seven.
And, and you're looking for some help?
Yes.
Okay, let us try to help you, okay? Jacob and Arturo, right over here. I want you to go talk to them, and if it requires raising some money, whatever, we will do our very best to make sure that your dad gets a proper burial, okay?
Thank you.
Out of respect, out of respect to him and to you, and we're so...
Light there, though, mother. They got that under control.
We're, we're...
I did that already.
We're very sorry for your loss. Let us do what we can, okay?
All right, Steinberg. Thank you very much, and council, keep doing the job that you're doing.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll do our best, we'll do our best to help out, okay? Thank you, guys. Okay.
Is Charles Ware here?
Okay, so now we got Wanda and Renan. I'm going to allow it, but please briefly, because it's 11 o'clock at night.
That's another problem I had on Sunday. I come out here Sunday to help feed the homeless at Cesar Chavez Park. And for some reason, we don't have any bathrooms for the public to use. And I went to Temples and went to use their restroom, because we have, on many occasions, bought hundreds of dollars of money there for coffee and what have you. And I was told, you buy a cup of coffee and you can use the bathroom.
As the volunteers need the, the volunteers don't get access to the bathroom, is what you're saying?
Well, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I pay my taxes. We don't have a bathroom.
You guys mind, just if you could...
We don't have public access to a bathroom.
Okay.
And I, I believe that, that our, our tax dollars did pay, did put some of these bathrooms in these parks, so that we could enjoy our business at the parks and also use the bathroom. I shouldn't have to be chasing down where I can use the bathroom, where I can't use it. I have, I have a kidney problem, and I, I just can't hold it, because they want me to. I had to go to Sutter, oh, yeah, to Sutter, to use their restroom. So, what can the city do about that? Because the bathrooms are all either locked up, closed, or no longer exist.
I know that some of the bathrooms in the parks have been closed. Let it, let us look into it. We, we hear you. Yeah, part of it is, well, some of the larger issues we've been talking about this evening, but we understand. Do you need to...
Well, you know, if you don't want the homeless defecating or urinating on your properties out here, then I think it would be, you know, a thing that we need to deal with.
Got it. Thank you. Last test, last public testimony, not on the homeless issue, please.
No, it's, it's really not a stunt or anything. It's not about the homeless. In my public comment, I put, in the terms there, "public comment," and that's just, I want to say that the best thing that I've done in my entire life is get involved in this process. Come listen and come speak and advocate. I'm not going down the homeless route, but just saying, advocating has been the best thing. But the problem is, when public comment starts at 10 o'clock, sometimes 10:30, 11 o'clock tonight, it really discourages people from getting involved. If you have kids, you can't do it. So, there's got to be a way. Can it be every other week, public comment is in the beginning, or 10 people in the beginning, or spurs it out throughout the, out the meeting? Because honestly, this is the, 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 the best I've felt in my entire life, is getting involved, and I want to encourage others to get involved. But people that have kids, it's just really difficult for them to do this.
I'm, I'm open, I'm open to...
It would be great if we could do some kind of hybrid, so that there was public comment in the beginning or in the middle.
Open to it. Let's think about it. Okay, ma'am. Thank you so much. All right. Are there council ideas or questions? No. Okay, no, we got a couple. Rick, now we got Rick, Vice Mayor.
Just, just real quick, there's a diversity job fair at the Sacramento City College on Thursday, the 23rd, from 10 to 2. I know there are people out there looking for jobs. They've got easy parking, access to RT, and free bus passes available. If you want more information, call 286-8600, 286-8600. Lots, lots of people out there focusing on getting you a job on that day.
And we got, real quickly, last year Governor Brown signed the McCarty Bill 1716, establishing a Low American River Conservancy Advisory Committee. I'd like to formally import Councilmember Harris and my office to serve on this committee and ask that this go on next week's agenda, because it's very important here.
I'll confirm it.
Thank you. Okay?
All right. And then I have PNP nominations. I'll be really fast. Ann Landberth-Henshaw Memorial Fund, Allison Leary. Preservation Commission, Alice Filanja and Carol Bowns. SAC Disabilities Advisory, Heather Williams. And Utilities Rated Advisory, P. Anthony Thomas.
Thank you, colleagues, for your patience tonight, very productive. Me, thank you to the staff. Thank you to everybody. We, we are adjourned.